Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Today is October 12th, 2021. This is our electronically held regular meeting of the Dearborn Heights City Council. It is a virtual meeting. Madam Clerk, can you please take roll call?
Yes, council members, just a reminder to state your, the city and the state or county in which you're currently located. Dave Abdallah.
Here, Dearborn Heights, Wayne County, Michigan.
Azuhair Abdahak.
Dearborn Heights, Wayne County, Michigan.
Moby Dune.
Here, Dearborn Heights, Wayne County, Michigan.
Robert Coniston.
Here, Dearborn Heights, Wayne County, Michigan.
Denise Malinowski Maxwell. Here, Dearborn Heights, Wayne County, Michigan. Ray Muscat.
Here, Dearborn Heights, Wayne County, Michigan.
And Tom Wensel.
Here, in the great city of Dearborn Heights, Wayne County, Michigan.
Madam Chair, you have a quorum. Thank you. Tonight, I'd like to have Councilman Wensel lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Thank you. I pledge allegiance.
Thank you. Everyone, please be seated. Next, we have the agenda approval.
Madam Chair.
Councilman Baydun.
Uh, I move that the city of Dearborn Heights approves the agenda of the electronically held regular meeting of October 12th, 2021, as submitted.
Support.
Or by Councilman Muscat, is there a discussion?
Madam Chair.
Councilman Wensel.
I'd like to add to the agenda, item nine, to you. Add, uh, a, uh, public hearing for the Parks and Recreation Master Plan for December 14th, 2021 at 6:00 PM.
Councilman Wensel, I sent you that information. Um, Kim, I'm sorry, Director Lawrence L, and I already discussed it, and we will be putting it on the next agenda. There is enough time. So we don't need to add it tonight. I, I sent you a message, but you didn't respond, because I, her and I already coordinated that.
Well, I spoke with her, and it's a one-minute, um, one-minute motion and approval. Uh, last year, we, we failed to get it done in time, and the city lost out on literally fifty thousand to a hundred thousand dollars of the grants.
Understandable, because she was not director then, but she is now, and we have coordinated it, because we don't add anything on a Zoom meeting unless it's an emergency, because no one has that in front of them to even verify what you're adding.
It's just a public.
That's all right. We can do it in two weeks. I already discussed it with her, and she was fine with it, and she is in here. I did try to unmute her, but I don't know why she's not unmuting.
Madam Chair, is there enough time?
Yeah, it's not till December.
Okay.
The public hearing is in December, so we've got plenty of time if we do it in two weeks.
Well, we have several meetings, uh, that won't, we won't be having because of the holidays and.
Madam Chair.
Okay, okay, we've got, um.
Madam Chair.
We've got the director here raising her hand. Let's let her speak. Go ahead, please.
Hi, you have to excuse me. I'm kind of sucking on a cough drop so I can long enough, uh, talk, but, um, the, the issue here is, uh, exactly what, uh, Tom Wensel mentioned. It's the, uh, holiday meetings that we're going to be missing out on, and we also have to advertise the public hearing for an entire month before it happens. So we have to advertise it starting, um, like the second week in November.
Okay, because I discussed this with you earlier, and you were fine with it. If there was a problem, you should have said something at that time.
Uh, you had to get off the phone, and we were talking, and you were going to call me back, and obviously you didn't get a chance to call me back, so.
Oh, no, I thought we had settled it, because that would, the second would be the ninth, and when is the public hearing?
The fourteenth of December.
Okay, that's within thirty days.
So we have.
Our next meeting is ninth of November.
Why take the chance? We've already.
Oh, wait, wait, wait. I'm sorry. No, because it's too confusing. I don't have that in front of me. I'm not going to vote for, I'll vote against it then, because right now, I'm sorry, the next meeting is October 26th, and there is no holiday then. Um, the closest thing is Halloween, and that's on the 31st, so it will be in plenty of time.
Yeah, and I mentioned to you that, uh, I'm actually going to be out of town, but I know you said that wasn't going to be a problem.
We can take care of it for you, though. That's no problem.
Okay.
Yeah, I know, I don't have a problem with that. I, I think it's important we get.
Madam Chair.
Madam Chair.
Councilman Baydun.
Thank you so much, and you know, I mean, if it's just simply, just to kind of go public with it, I don't see what the big deal is if we go ahead and put it on the agenda today.
Because we don't walk things on at a Zoom meeting. We've consistently not done that, and you, I don't, well, you, I don't know. Um, Councilman Abdallah.
Madam Chair, can I just get a verification, and, and I respect your opinion on this, but I try to get a verification, because I don't want this to come back to bite us from, uh, Director Kim, uh, just to make sure that we definitely have enough time on this, because it seems like there was some possible miscommunication based on who thought what and who spoke with who. And that's irrelevant. I'm not worried about that. I'm more concerned, I want to get it from her directly, that there is enough time to do what needs to be done, or we will not lose out on any potential funds like we did, at least what I, what's been said last year.
Right, if it goes on, that would be going on the 26th meeting. Um, Director, would that be ample enough time?
It, it would as long as it is discussed at that meeting, um, but the problem, like I, I said, I was going to be out of town, so I worry about that. Um, but the, the big thing is, is if the DNR, um, realizes or sees or knows that it hasn't been advertised for thirty days fully before, um, you know, the public hearing, um, will get denied. That's why I'm concerned.
Yeah, I don't see a problem. I, I don't have a problem as long as it's properly put on the agenda approving it, because it is important, and I, I give you my word, it will be on the next agenda.
But I, I, is the only thing we're approving today is just to accept to advertise it? If that's the case, then it shouldn't be a problem. If that's the only thing.
Yeah, but I don't have wording in front of me. Do you?
No, I don't, but I.
I don't either.
Just concerned about her being out of town or us missing out on this. That's all I'm, I'm saying.
Okay, well, you can do it if you want. We just wasted, um.
Yeah.
A lot of time trying to add something that really shouldn't have been added here at this time, but that's what you want to do. Go ahead.
Thank you. Can we add that as nine, you?
Support.
Okay, all those in favor say aye.
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 All those opposed? The ayes have it. So what war are we calling it, Councilman? What is the exact wording and what is the content of it?
Announcement of a public hearing scheduled for 6:00 PM, December 14th, prior to that meeting, city council meeting held on that day.
Okay. Good enough. All right. Any further discussion before we approve the agenda? Madam Chair. Uh, yes, um, Madam Clerk. We're discussing the motion over here, because, um, Councilman Baydun made the original motion with a seconded by, um, Councilman Muscat. And then tap, so we need a second to Councilman Wensels.
I seconded.
Councilman Muscat seconds it. And then we also will need that notification so that we can publish it. We don't have the actual public notice to publish. So we will need that before we do any publishing.
That'll be with our vote.
No, we need the actual Councilman Muscat. We need the actual details. I sent a copy of what was done in 2006 to, uh, the Director of, uh, Parks and Rec. I looked back in our files to see that was done before, and.
Director Lawrence L could have that to you tomorrow.
And that's what, that's why, that's why my request is today, is I need to have that provided to us so that we can properly publish it.
And the Director make sure she gets that tomorrow?
Yes.
Thank you. Okay, and, and, um, George, can you make me co-host? I don't have any capabilities here to do anything.
Yes, ma'am, sorry about that.
Thank you, because everybody's raising their hand. I couldn't even address them.
Got it.
Okay, next, do I hear a motion to move into a closed study session?
Madam Chair.
Council Chair.
Councilman Muscat.
Uh, I move that the Dearborn Heights City Council moved to a closed session at 7:10 to discuss a lawsuit presented by Mayor Bazey, Chief of Staff Hernandez Corporation, Council Miyaki, and Mark Roberts of Secret Sportal, uh, as outlined in, uh, 3.38.
Support.
3.1A.
Support.
Councilman Baydun, uh, Mark Roberts, did you have something to say?
Yeah, I would ask that the, uh, person making the motion consider an amendment to also indicate the purpose of the closed session is to discuss attorney-client privileged communication dated September 10th, 2021, at 2:14, um, to the, uh, to the mayor and through the merits of the city council.
Uh, so be it.
Thank you.
Um, Council Chair.
Councilman Abdallah, go ahead, please.
But I'll leave what has to also be added, at least according to the motion, is in, this is in lawsuit in regards to Kramer versus the city of Dearborn Heights.
I, I would suggest that it just be, um.
I didn't want to say the words.
It was, it was attorney-client privileged communication for section eight.
It was in the motions. That's why I mentioned that.
That's why I didn't say that.
Okay, thank you.
I, I think there was some legal action that we were told we had to say it. But that doesn't matter. All right. Okay, all those, is there any discussion before we vote on this?
I think Mr. Miyaki wants to say something.
Yep, I got him.
Um, I think it's important to recognize that this is actually not a lawsuit. This is a claim, and that's why Mr. Roberts is saying we need to end up doing it based on the, uh, other exemption under the Open Meetings Act for a closed session. Just to clarify, it's a claim, but it hasn't actually proceeded to a lawsuit.
Got you. Okay. Thank you. That's the information that we got was that it was a lawsuit. So thank you for the clarification. We'll indicate that on the motion.
Very good. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion before we vote on this? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? We need to do a roll call. Council Chair, we need to do a roll call. Yeah, I'm going to. Please let me do this. That's my. Okay. Okay, Councilman Muscat.
Yes.
Councilman Coniston.
Yes.
Councilman Abdallah.
Yes.
Councilman Abdahak.
Yes.
Malinowski Maxwell, yes, and Councilman Baydun.
Yes.
Councilman Wensel.
Yes. Yes.
Thank you.
All right, you want me to open the room?
Yes, please. Okay, now it is.
Council Chair, the Dearborn Heights City Council moved back into open session.
For the port.
For by Councilman Abdahak, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it. Now, do you want me to do a roll call on that, Madam Clerk?
Now, Council Chair.
Councilman Muscat.
I move that the Dearborn Heights City Council approved Corporations Council's, uh, recommendation on, uh, 3.1A.
Support.
Court by Councilman Abdahak, is there any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it. Okay, we're moving on. Uh, next, we have approval of the minutes. This is the minutes from the regular meeting of September 14th, 2021.
Madam Chair.
Councilman Abdallah.
I move that the Dearborn Heights City Council approved the minutes for the regular meeting of September 14th, 2021, as outlined in item four A.
Support.
For by Councilman Baydun, is there any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it. Next, we have the meetings from the regular meeting of September 28th, 2021.
Madam Chair.
Councilman Baydun.
I move that the Dearborn Heights City Council approved the minutes of the regular meeting of September 28th, 2021, as outlined in four B.
For a port.
Port by Councilman Abdahak, is there any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it. Next, we have public hearing and comment on agenda items only. There is a two-minute limit. You need to state your name and where you live. Is there any comments on public hearing and agenda items? See, and then we'll move on. Next, we have fund transfers and current claims.
Madam Chair.
Councilman Baydun.
I move that the Dearborn Heights City Council approved the current claims six dash one through six dash six six, as submitted.
Support.
For by Councilman Muscat, is there any discussion?
Madam Chair, I have.
Councilman Abdahak.
One question on. Forty-nine, uh, I'm sorry, for fifty and fifty-one.
Fifty or fifteen?
I'm, I'm sorry. Just give me a second. On fifty, fifty-two and fifty-three.
Huntington National Bank?
Yes. I just want to, you know, we have a bond which we took with Wayne County in 2015, and it looks like we are paying interest around nine-plus percent. Now, does this qualify to be paid the payment from the CSO over tax money? The 3.8 million dollars CSO.
Who are you directing the question towards?
Uh, the treasurer or the controller?
I'm looking. Do we have either one in here?
I'm, I'm here. This is the controller.
Go ahead.
Uh, yeah, and honestly, I'm, I'm unaware of the restrictions on the CSO bond. I, we haven't used any of the funds from that bond to pay for anything else, so I, I'd have to check on that for you, to be honest.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
I would appreciate your answer, you know.
Okay, I'll shoot, I'll shoot.
Before next meeting.
Okay, will do.
Thank you.
That's it.
Okay, any further discussion?
Madam Chair.
Councilman Abdallah.
Um, I had a question for Director Conrad, and I just wanted to get an explanation and a clarification in regards to item number 630. This is for cleanup services, uh, for eleven thousand five hundred eighty-seven and fifty cents. Um, the dates were a little bit further and past, uh, uh, the storms. So I just want to make sure, was this all for the storms, what specifically it was for, and most importantly, what can we do to try to minimize the amount of money that we are putting out? I know, I know this particular storm was, you know, it, it's not always predictable, but it looks like we're going to have, unfortunately, continuous situations, so I, I think we should do some sort of either, not necessarily a study session, but from self-to-study, and look into what we need to add as far as equipment and what have you is concerned, so we don't have to subcontract out a lot. Because I was concerned about, this one was for twelve thousand. If you remember, there was multiple, uh, expenses of twenty and thirty and forty thousand dollars, uh, when we had the storm in June, and so I think this has to start to be looked into, if you don't mind, uh, giving us a little information.
Both, um, Corporate Council Miyaki and Mayor Bazey have raised their hands. Who would like to speak on that?
I can say, this is actually, uh, Council Chair Proton Abdallah, this is from the, the flood debris, and, uh, we went all the way up to, uh, uh, I would say, like, around that time, maybe you might see another one with priority. Uh, they were the cheapest to haul out the flood, the flood debris from the.
Okay, but, but my concern as mayor is, i- i- and I know the floods, okay, this is the time it happened, and obviously nobody can predict something that's going to happen in the future, but it seems like these particular floods came out of nowhere for Dearborn, Dearborn Heights and many other cities. But now, what, we know it's starting to happen, it seems to be more and more often nowadays, and, and I'm not going to get into the argument of, you know, global warming and all that stuff, but we got to start maybe pre-planning a little bit more, and I'm not saying that you didn't pre-plan, I'm just saying, let's start doing it, because it seems like it's happening a lot more often. Try to save somebody, so that we don't have to subcontract as much. So whatever equipment that we could purchase that is cheap, and it would not cost us a lot of money to be able to subcontract, I would highly recommend that we start looking into that, because it seems to be somewhat continuous.
Yeah, we're actually looking at, uh, we have the new contract that, that we put out for bid, you know, that's some of the discussions that we had, so we are looking at that as well.
New contract, you mean with the garbage hauling?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Ms. Hernandez, go ahead, please.
Hi, Mr., uh, Abdallah, I also wanted to add that, um, the emergency manager, Mr. Conrad, Mr. Dev, myself, and Mr. Jamal have been meeting with a company called, uh, um, ESN, which is like a pre-proposal for emergency situations, so we are working on a larger scope, um, vendors that we would have pre-contract with in case of emergencies. So that is a large project, and we are working to, to find a way to lessen the cost to the residents and also have someone immediately available when an emergency does take place.
And that's exactly what I'm thinking of, because when you have it proactively, it's much, much smaller rate than when you call somebody on an emergency basis. So it's kind of like, uh, like a car warranty. It's cheap buying it upfront, but trying to pay expenses for, uh, fix-ups later is much more expensive. So good idea. Thank you. Good job.
Thank you. Mr. Jamal, did you need to say something?
Just one word. Uh, Councilman Abdallah, thank you for thinking parallel to what the mayor executive team thinking. This is a contingency contract. It's common, and we will execute it as soon as we put it out for bid. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further comment before we vote on this? Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it. Next, we have consideration of bids. This is what the city engineer dib, a bid reward for the city hall roof repair project.
Madam Chair.
Councilman Abdallah.
I move that the Dearborn Heights City Council award the bid for the city hall roof repair project to A A Eldau, uh, Inc. in the amount of seventy-six thousand five hundred, as they are the lowest qualified bidder, and authorize the Controller's Office to return all bid bonds to unsuccessful bidders. Additionally, authorize Corporations Council to prepare a contract and authorize the mayor and clerk to sign the contract. Furthermore, authorize the mayor and the controller to sign the necessary warrants not to exceed seventy-six thousand five hundred, and authorize a treasurer to issue payment as outlined, as outlined in item seven A.
Support.
For by Councilman Baydun, is there any discussion?
Madam Chair.
Councilman Baydun.
All right, thank you so much. So I just, my question, as I see here, as looking at this, I know we, we had a bid before, uh, and now we're going with somebody that's a lot more, I mean, they're less expensive. One was a hundred ninety-six thousand two hundred and fifty dollars. The other one is seventy-six thousand five hundred. Clearly, we're saving almost, uh, uh, closer a hundred thousand dollars. Uh, maybe, uh, Mr. Deeb can explain what's the difference and why one was so much cheaper? Or anybody for that matter, but I just.
Sure, I'll wait for him. He's, he's unmuting.
I'm unmuting. Um, Councilman Baydun, thank you. Uh, this is just a reminder that this is a replacement of, uh, bid for a previously, uh, previously approved contract to do the sections of the roof, uh, that was, uh, experiencing some issues, end-of-useful life issues. So we've had that, uh, uh, this project was publicly bid and advertised three, three times, consider, can, uh, can, you know, uh, advertised three different times. But, uh, back in July, we advertised it. We received two bids without, uh, any, um, uh, bid documents. We didn't receive any, uh, um, required bonds or cashier check, so the bids were, were deemed non-responsive. We, uh, second bid was advertised on August 17th, and we had walkthroughs, and bids were due on August 30th. Twenty-seven contractors actually, uh, downloaded the documents, and only one bidder, uh, um, submitted bid, and that bid was for a hundred and ninety-six thousand two hundred and fifty dollars, as you indicated. Now, both of these projects, uh, both of the times, we, uh, uh, advertised the project as, uh, silicone overlay. And, uh, so the silicone overlay, when we received one bid on August 30th, uh, you know, with, um, the city charter requires minimum of two bids, uh, it was decided not to recommend an award, so we didn't come to you for an award. We re-advertised the project back in, on September 9th, and then we did, the staff, uh, um, did quite a bit of contacting, uh, uh, contractors to determine if we can get more and try to encourage people to add, uh, to submit bids. And we, uh, uh, we, we asked the contractor to submit, uh, the form bids in any form they choose, you know, um, online, hand-deliver, hard, hard copies, to try to get more bidders, uh, involved. So we received one additional bid on September, uh, nine, sixteenth, and that bid, uh, was for an alternate method. And the alternate method was an overlay as opposed to the silicone, uh, uh, cover. So the over, and that bid came from Aldau Company for seventy-six thousand five hundred. So therefore, we evaluated, now we have two proposals, uh, one for the original silicone, uh, uh, overlay for the hundred ninety-six thousand, and the second was the alternate bid for seventy-six, uh, for an overlay. So now, um, now we evaluated the two proposals submitted, and then we can, uh, contacted the contractors who did not submit bid to try to figure out why they didn't. And most of the reasons given to us were the, um, labor and material shortage, the time of the year, which is critical, because the time of the year, the silicone requires fifty-plus degrees, and now we're approaching, if we approve it today, we're approaching the start date with, you know, questionable temperature. And so we took that into account, and we review all the qualified proposals and, uh, determined that with ten-year labor and material warranty, and the fact that we're getting this project now for approximately quarter of the price that we, uh, we, we approved back in December of last year, um, we are recommending to go with a seventy-six five hundred, and then, um, um, you know, and, and get the material and labor warranty for that product. So they're two different things. The reason it's an overlay as opposed to a silicone.
So, so my second question to you is, and I think you answered it right here towards the end, it says you have a ten-year material, material and, uh, labor, uh, warranty. So in two years, when this, if this leaks over again, they're going to come back out at no charge, uh, they're going to come back, and they're going to repair it.
Ten-year full labor and material warranty. The overlay will also include the coping, which is the aluminum on, on, on top of the, uh, sides. So it's an overlay plus the coping on the side, so.
Wonderful. My next question is, is this the entire roof as city hall, or just, just?
That's not, that's the trouble area. The back roof was not leaking, so if we ever have to come back and do the back roof, I just wanted to accommodate the issues that we're facing today, because we have, we have leaks and, and occupied spaces. We also have some material delaminating down below, so we're doing an overlay on the trouble location, and if we have to come back and do the other, uh, side that's currently not leaking, we can address that at that time.
Okay, thank you.
For Council Miyaki, did you need to add something?
Uh, just a clarification, the city charter does not, uh, require a minimum number of bids, nor does the ordinance that is, it is derived from. So, uh, we can have, for example, one bid, and that's fine. It's just been a city practice, always try to hold out for more than one bid. That's all I had to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Abdahak.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Uh, I did walk yesterday with, uh, Mr. Blackburn on the roof, and I looked at all the repairs which have been done up there, hundreds of basically Band-Aids everywhere on that roof. I don't think that roof will last ten years or even five years. We need to know if there is any mold, anything underneath this roof. It is too dangerous, you know, to go ahead and, and do something drastic and spend a lot more money than we should before we really discover what's underneath this roof and what we need to do. Uh, in my, in my opinion, uh, Engineer Ali, you, you have followed, uh, lots of procedures. Engineer Ali, you, you have followed, uh, lots of procedures and you have done lots of things to make sure that is done as soon as possible. But do you think seventy-six thousand dollars is justified for this kind of repair?
So if you're, uh, uh, Councilman, if you're thinking about the, the right way to do that, that roof is beyond its useful life. We, we all, we know that. To properly do that roof, you'll have to strip it back to the, to the, to the deck. The issue here is that there has never been a hazmat evaluation of that facility. So if I do that, you might be opening up a can of worms that you have to address the subsurface below the roof and then go all the way. First, there is no time left in this year or material, for that matter, to address it. Is it, is it reasonable to do that at this point? I think the seventy-six thousand now, if we address the issue that we're facing currently, which is the delamination of the material below the deck, the continuous leak and the impact on occupants of the building, you know, you have to consider that too, because it's causing mold down below. If the overlay addresses that, whether we stay in the building ten years or not, or the roof lasts ten years, to me is irrelevant. I wanted to address the current issue we're having. And that current issue is the continuous leak and the Band-Aids that we have. We have water due to all the patches that you saw, Councilman, you saw the many patches. We have water trapped below the single ply roof. By the way, this is a TPO material. TPO is a thermoplastic polyolefin. So this is a single ply membrane that water, once you have water penetrating, it gets trapped below that single ply. So when you see a roof down below in one area, that doesn't mean the hole is right above it. It could be anywhere on the roof. So the overlay is, and that we're recommending now will stop that, will address it because it shows going to cover the whole area and go to the sides and get aluminum coping on it. So that will at least stop the further damage and the impact to occupants. Now, what we do after, whether you wanted to replace the entire building, do a whole new roof, or maybe look at gable option. You know, see if that's, that's, you know, uh, I, we haven't looked at it to see if the cost is justified. Because to do a gable option, you have to do a structure and then re-change the, you know, put trusses and all that. Uh, we can look at that later, but in the meantime, the seventy-six thousand is buying you the safe occupancy of that building for the next few years.
What are the consequences if we don't do it at this time?
If we continue to have the lamination of the material down below and that material is considered hazardous, you'll have to leave the building.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Hey, Mr. Jamal?
Uh, good afternoon. Uh, nothing about engineering. I do agree for our professional engineer, he put his seal on the engineering of this new alternative. From the, uh, from my side, which is involving paying from the budget about eighty thousand. I want to assure first the mayor, then the second, the legislative, that this particular alternative bidding was done according to section two, dash eight-two, and general comparative bidding should be required for the purchase of or contracting for material supplies in public improvement as set forth in section one of article seven of charter two of the code. For purpose of this division one, comparative bidding requirements are fulfilled by comparative bidding using competitive seal bids or proposals, comparative internet bid or proposals, comparative government bid or proposal or other type of competitive bid or proposal that otherwise ensure comparative price and or term. I affirm what, and I second what our corporation council stated from the legal point of view, I am assuring all of you confidently to vote on the recommendation of the professional engineer alternative bidding with no fear of, uh, being a violation of the charter because the city did on behalf of the legislature all what they can do to make it competitive. And I leave it up to there. I recommend to you that this bid is kosher. You can have a good day.
Hey. Any more questions?
Ma'am Chair.
Councilman Abdullah.
Uh, just want to say, I had, I had a conversation with Mr. Aladdeep. So first of all, I want to commend you on a good job. I know you went above and beyond, at least it was my style, which is not just putting it out for bid, but let's make some calls and try to create some bidding on the project. And this was something I was told a while back that that's not, I don't know, allowed or practiced or what have you, but I'll tell you, it would be my style if I was getting asked them. So I like that style either way. I'm good with that. So good job. But the question I have is, there's been some questions in, in terms of, and this is where it's not my line of expertise, which is the type of material that's being used and whether, whether this is the best thing to move forward with. Although I like the price quite a bit than what the other price was. But, but, but I would, I'm, I'm just saying that all of us are relying a lot, quite a bit on somebody like you with your expertise to make sure that this is good enough material, one. And that's where I'm really concerned about, just because some people have questioned it, they know a little bit more about this. And number two, the concern with a ten-year warranty with a company that we may or may not know, I mean, I don't know, do you know this particular company? Because with a ten-year warranty with a company that starts out as an LLC and goes out of business or shuts down their LLC six months later, we have zero warranty. And that's what concerns me, because this is not, uh, uh, when I looked at the company, a well-known company that we all know. And that scares me a little bit, because a ten-year warranty is useless on an LLC that shuts down, uh, you know, two, three, four months later. Thank you.
I agree.
Yeah, I, I have to agree now. Um, Mr. Dip, Director Dip, I got a question. You said that this is an overlay as opposed to silicone. So it's not what we put out for a bid for, is it?
Right, it's an alternate bid.
But we can't, I, I guess when we put a bid out, can we legally take something that doesn't comply with the exact specifications of the bid?
It's an alternate. People are, people can provide an alternate, yes. If they, and you have to review it and accept it, but it's called an alternate bid. So, and, and the risk here is that because it's been advertised, we consecutive months, the time of the year, I'm really concerned about the time of the year. So if you place the order now for the silicone, we may not get it in time in order to apply it at fifty to sixty degrees. So if we get that in mid-November to late-November, I may not be able to do it this year. That's, that's the concern. So yes, it would have been nice to do it in June or July. That, that would have been the right time of the year. But because of what we, what happened, three times out to bid and not enough people, not enough bidders, it is a concern now. The temperature is becoming a concern. But the single ply overlay is not a concern.
Because I was told that that, um, previous bid that all of council approved was canceled back in March. So I guess I'm questioning why we didn't go out for bids right away and why wasn't, why wasn't council made aware that they were canceling the bids? I don't get why it was canceled when we had a company all set up to do it and prove by city council.
You're talking about the December bid?
Yes.
The December bid was found to have contractual issues. That, that bid, we, we discussed it before. It was for two hundred and eighty-eight thousand five hundred and, and the, the scope was very poorly written. It didn't specify what material to use. And plus it had the issue with the, uh, um, you know, the, the wrong location. We're talking about a condo roof. So there were some issues on that, on that, in that bid. I couldn't understand, I wasn't around in December when it was bid. So when I read that in March, I couldn't accept that there was some issues with the bid. I mean, it doesn't even specify the material to be used.
Okay. Because I, I know with this bid, um, I did some research on the company, the guy, there's only one employee there. They only took CARE Act money for one person and it advertises a handyman's business, which, you know, I worry about the ten-year contract, you know, the warranty.
Madam Chair, that is true for any company. So if I get a, uh, the two hundred thousand dollar company and the company is not around in five or seven years, I'll be facing the same issue. I mean, it, it's, that's the fact.
Okay.
But, but go ahead, I'm sorry.
Go ahead, Councilman Abdullah.
Well, I just want to add, that's a true, true statement there, uh, uh, Engineer, uh, Aladdeep. But not on the bigger companies, you know what I mean? I mean, the bigger companies will tend to be pretty safe. They've been around for a while, et cetera, et cetera. My concern with this one, with this one, when I seen like an LLC and it, it just scared me a little bit. And now based on the council chair saying, now I'm even more concerned, quite honestly, that this is not just, uh, and I hope not, a, a fly-by-night company that's, you know, so, so here's, let me give you an example of a concern. Now I'm getting more concerned. After what the council chair said, now I'm even more concerned. So I'm just thinking out loud here.
Okay.
So this is a smaller company and I don't know. I'm just using hypotheticals at this point. A smaller company, let's say with whatever assets, a hundred thousand dollars in assets hypothetically. And then they have a warranty and then this ends up being a problematic that costs three, four hundred thousand. Then they just shut the LLC, they're done. And there's nothing we can do versus a big company, which usually can take on much better if we have a major claim.
So the second bidder counts, uh, Councilman Protime, uh, Freedom, uh, Contracting is also an LLC. So, um, yeah, I mean, it's, it's an LLC. So.
Well, not just, uh, I know, so most companies are in LLC. I myself, as a Realtor, I'm an LLC. So the, the bigger concern is just to make sure that, whether it's this one or any other one, that in general, it's a company that can carry the cost if we run into a warranty problem and that's somebody that shuts down, uh, you know, a few months later. There, you, you'll tend to find, and I'm sure as you are aware, your bigger companies will not tend to do that. So hypothetically, quickened loans is more than likely an LLC, but I really doubt if they'll shut down because Dave Abdallah sued them for three thousand dollars.
I understand.
As an example.
I'm, I'm, I'm simply trying to find a solution that is, that is, uh, economical and that can do the job and then we can perform this time of the year. I, I'm really concerned about this time of the year. Because if I go back to the one ninety-six with the silicone, we may be sitting here till next spring. Because if the temperature doesn't allow it, I can't put the silicone on.
Right. And I'm concerned for our, for our, um, employees also, because many of them have complained, as I would. Uh, you know, uh, many, um, employees have complained about just sitting in their office and just the thing is just dripping left and right. Obviously, that's not acceptable. Not only in terms of getting wet or dirty, but in terms of more important than that mold. As any of you guys know, with water just sitting there inside the roof, mold is gonna procure and that's not good.
Or potentially hazardous material that we don't know about. That's, that's the concern. So.
Sure.
Another concern too is I've got several calls from people worried about that there's already mold there. And if you seal over the wet moldy, um, and it is drywall or gypsum board, and it's gonna seal the mold in and make it, I mean, because you can take the ceiling tiles out in City Hall and look up and see the gypsum board. So you're just sealing in moisture with no way to dry it out and is that healthy?
I'm putting the sealer on top of the roof, not underneath. So the deck is still exposed, but the roof itself is, we're stopping further damage is what we're doing. So that overlay is on top of the existing overlay on the roof.
So yeah, my concern is, okay, my concern is how are they gonna dry out the gypsum board before they put the sealer on it so they can prevent mold, so our employees don't get sick?
That doesn't, it doesn't.
That does, that, that does from the inside, not from the outside.
Yeah.
Councilman, do you know that if you put the ceiling tiles up, you can see the roof, the gypsum?
Councilwoman, the, the gypsum boards on the inside of the building, the work is being performed on the outside of the building. The gypsum board can be, can be maintained from inside the building. You stop the leak first, then you repair the damage on the inside of a building. That's the way, uh, the, the, the process goes on just about any renovation.
Okay, I do have Mr. Blackburn from DPW. I don't know if he would be willing to speak, because that's a question I want to address towards him then. Because he's been on that roof a lot and he's very familiar with it. And he might not be there. He's on here, but he's not on. Oh, there you are.
I just got a question real quick.
Okay, wait a minute, we're, we're, we're waiting for him to answer first. And then your next Councilman Baydun, I do have you down.
A point of order, uh, Madam Chair. You know, we've been on this subject now for almost twenty minutes. And most of these questions could have been asked by, at, by phone and been already answered in a proper manner. And we're on here on, 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 only on seven A and it's twenty minutes on one. And people aren't doing their due diligence by calling these, uh, directors ahead of time.
Okay, Councilman, I'm waiting for Mr. Blackburn to answer me and then we can move on.
Can you repeat the question?
Um, the gypsum board that is on the roof, if it's wet and they put the sealer over it, will it still remain wet and be exposed to the employees down below?
Um, I would, um, with all due respect, I would, um, defer all the questions to, um, Mr. Deb.
No problem.
My, uh, my opinions don't matter, so, um, I will, um, defer all questions to him.
Okay, no problem. And then I have Councilman Baydun and then Mr. Director Jamal.
Thank you, Madam Chair. And I know I've already asked a couple of questions to Ali Deep, if I can ask him just one more. The difference between the, uh, the bid for two hundred and twenty thousand back in December uh, and the bid now, were they both just simple repairs? Or what was the difference between the two? Why was one seem a little bit more credible? Uh, I, because I personally don't, I mean, look, seventy-six thousand dollars, I know this is a short term. Uh, and, and I also know we're, we're time limited here. I mean, I think we're really, like Councilman Muskett said, we're really putting too much of our time and effort on this. I, I think we need to vote on this and move on, but I, I'm just curious for myself, what was the difference? Uh, material?
Councilman, I'm gonna repeat that one more time. The December ten, twenty twenty bid for two hundred and eighty-eight thousand five hundred dollars did not have a detailed scope in it. And I still have that bid with me. There is no scope. It listed two roofs, one on the condominium, one on the city hall, but it did not go into detail as to what material, you know, uh, what, what, what else was involved. It, it, it didn't have any scope, so it's kind of hard to, to, to compare it.
What condominium are you even talking about?
What do you mean?
You said condominium?
That's what it listed. I have that, I have that proposal. It listed a condominium and roof replacement on a condominium. I don't know, but it was listed.
I don't recall that.
I know, it was listed twice. So it could be an error, it could be a mistake, but there wasn't.
I think, yeah, I think we should move on with this and just go ahead and forward on this. Thank you, Madam Chair.
We have, um, Mr. Jamal?
Uh, again, um, I am, I'm kind of concerned that the December bid, uh, recommendation was approved by the council when there is a language of condominium in it. That's, that's, that's way, uh, that, uh, indication of system failure that council members will vote and approve a, uh, a bid containing condominium language on it. And later on, by, by will of God that or by some review that was discovered. That's number one. Number two, this particular bid, I think this alternative proposal, I think because Mr. Deep was a little bit right now, uh, kind of like feel and defense. This bid, to my understanding, requires, or Mr. Deb already negotiated a, what we call performance, uh, bond and maintenance and warranty bond. Those bonds usually are, uh, within the bid. So I just want to remind, uh, Engineer Ali, probably you just, you know, overlooked this. I recommend that this particular alternative to have the, what we call maintenance and warranty that will only replace up to seventy-six thousand dollars. The cost of such a bond, guarantee whoever is bidding on this, uh, on any bid for the city, that, you know, the performance bond, uh, which I don't think it's required now because it's gonna be done anyway, not gonna be paid. But the warranty, the warranty bond, uh, should be, uh, discussed and required. And I recommend that the council will approve this pending on providing a, uh, a maintenance warranty bond.
It's not, it's, it's not gonna work. It's not. If I, if you want me to put that back out on the street with that language, you can, we can have that, we'll be talking about doing that roof next spring. This is, this is reality. Now, you want to do this.
Absolutely, I agree.
And if you want to do that, vote on it, I will put it back out on the street and we'll do it next spring.
I agree, I agree with whatever the council agree to, to have. And anyway, the council approved, it will be. And anyway, the council approved, it will be according to like, seconding our Cooperation Council to eight or two. It is a comparative. It was bid out several times. You choose any alternative being presented to you. From that particular point of view, you all.
A point of order, Council Chair, this is going on.
Councilman Muscat, please do not interrupt.
No, I'm not. No, I'm making the.
Councilman Muscat, I'm gonna ask you to please settle down or I'm gonna have to mute you.
Order. And you have to respond to the point of order.
They were having a discussion, councilman, and please do not interrupt them.
Going on long enough.
Yeah, I, I agree with Councilman Muscat.
I understand, but we've got two people that still have their hands up that do deserve time.
The council can approve by majority with the mayor's authority to veto at any one of this. Not all the ones containing the condominium. So you can go and remove the requirement even for, for the bid bond if you want. But not on the ones containing condominium. Each one of this bid is eligible. Those are proposed in front of you. They are not in violation of anything. There is no federal money involved. You made the decision. Me and our Cooperation Council agreed together on this particular one. Myself, because we're using eighty thousand from the budget. If you pay that from the budget, you are in compliance with the budgetary. You know, this is my, my point. Now, whether you demand, you ask, you want to pay a little bit more to the contractor to, to get a warranty bond or not, all can be negotiated. You are the legislative who's gonna make that decision. I rest the rest of whatever. Thank you.
And Conston?
Thank you, Madam Chair. The prior contract, has that been canceled? So they, from the December bid, which I think the city accepted, has that contract formally been canceled? And did the prior company that was gonna do the two hundred thousand dollar and something work? Have they released the city from that contract? Does anybody know?
For Councilman Miyaki, go ahead, please.
It's my understanding, and someone could correct me if I'm wrong, but there was a selection, but there wasn't actually a contract that was executed. And as a result, then, this would be considered to be a rejection of that prior motion and that no further action would be necessary. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Adel Hock?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I think we can sit all night back and forth and talk about this. I walk with Mr. Blackburn on the top of the roof. It's in miserable, you know, shape. It needs to be repaired. Either we repair it with the time we have or we put our employees in our building at risk of being shut down. I hope we all see that and we take into consideration these things. Thank you, Madam.
Councilman Muscat?
You know, Council Chair, we've discussed these things over and over and over again. We knew that the original contract was never signed. We don't need to deal with that contract. Okay? And what, what, what Engineer Ali Deeb said was right on the mark. And we didn't have to go to a dissertation by Director Jamal on how to do this. Okay? The council's position is to vote on this and not listen to all of this. We've had all the information since last December. And shame on us if we didn't keep up with it. I kept up with it and I knew exactly what was going on. Okay? And, and it just, it just gets me upset that we spent almost thirty, forty minutes on this and where did we, what did we get? Now we're gonna go to a vote and it'll pass. And shame on everybody for asking these questions right now when they could have picked up the phone and done this three days, four days ago. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further questions before we vote on this? All those in favor say aye.
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 Those opposed? I'm opposed. So let's do a roll call. Melanowski Maxwell is a no. Councilman Wensel. Councilman Wensel?
Is muted.
Oh, he's. Whoops. Councilman Wensel?
Yes.
Councilman Baydun?
Yes.
Councilman Abdullah?
Yes.
Councilman Abdal Hock?
Yes.
Councilman Conston?
Yes.
Councilman Muscat?
Yes.
Okay, it passes. Next, we have Fire Chief Brogan, request for bids for squad.
Madam Chair.
Councilman Baydun?
Well, that the Dearborn Heights City Council authorized a controls office to advertise for bids for a new squad as budgeted for, in the twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two budget as outlined in seven B.
Support.
For by Councilman Abdal Hock, is there any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
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 Those opposed? The ayes have it. Next, from reports from the mayor, we have Alliance of Downriver Watersheds ADW appointments.
Madam Chair.
Councilman Baydun?
I move that the Dearborn Heights City Council concur with the mayor's appointment of Mr. Ali Deeb to serve as the primary representative for Robert Conrad, DPW director, to serve as the alternative representative to the Alliance of Downriver Watershed ADW for the city of Dearborn Heights. In addition, authorize the mayor to sign the form designation, designating these representatives as outlined in AA.
Support.
Support by Councilman Muscat. Is there any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
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 Those opposed? The ayes have it. Next, for reports from city officials, we have Treasurer Hicks Clayton establish city remote revenue collection sites.
Madam Chair.
Councilman Abdullah?
I move that Dearborn Heights City Council approve establishing city remote revenue collection sites at Carolyn Kennedy, Carolyn Kennedy Library, John F. Kennedy Library, Canfield Recreation Center, Richard A. Young Recreation Center, Eaton Senior Recreation Center, Berwin Senior Recreation Center, Dearborn Heights Police Department, Twentieth District Court and Police Department. Furthermore, authorize the city treasurer to establish and implement an operational internal policy and daily verification process, including cash drawer, balancing versus repeat, I'm sorry, versus receipts versus collected revenue for the above listed remote sites in line with the city treasurer's current master revenues collection procedure as outlined in item nine A.
Support.
For by Councilman Abdal Hock, is there any discussion?
Madam Chair.
Councilman Abdullah?
Not sure if our treasurer's on right now.
She wasn't feeling well today.
Okay, then, then just for, okay, I'll, I'll talk to her later about it. Thank you.
Any further discussion?
Council Chair.
All those, Councilman Wensel?
Do we know what the cost of each one of these kiosks is?
Uh, Council Chair?
Hi, Councilman Abdullah.
I know it was mentioned, if you remember, probably about two, three, maybe four meetings ago, uh, when our treasurer, Lisa Hicks Clayton, originally brought it forward. I forgot the dollar amount, but it was something that we were comfortable with. Don't quote me, I don't know why I remember two thousand dollars.
It was three thousand a month.
Was it? Okay.
Per, per unit or for all of them?
All of them.
Nine thousand to put in three thousand a month.
Okay. It seems like awful lot of locations. They're kind of almost redundant, lo- locations.
It's impossible, Councilman.
Yeah. Um, I'm not, I'm just not sure. We have one at the library on the south end and one at the rec center and then one at the Eaton Center. There's three within a mile, a mile and a half from each other there.
Madam Chair?
Councilman Abdal Hock?
I really would recommend that we table this one until we get answers from the treasurer.
I support that.
Okay, at this time, do we all agree to, um, refer this back to Treasurer Hicks Clayton for the next meeting?
I, I don't, Madam Chair.
Okay, let's take a vote. Who wants?
I, I know the library director has the, has his hand up.
Yes, go ahead, Director.
Um, I don't believe this is about kiosks. Uh, this is more just so we can have a cash register at these locations. Like to collect fines or to, well, we don't collect fines, but to collect copy money and stuff like that at these locations. That's all it is. It is not about three thousand dollar kiosks. That's it.
I still, I still would like to hear from the treasurer, please.
All right, you know, I, I agree. Then let's take a vote to see if we can just refer this back to the treasurer for the next meeting because there is kind of confusion. Half of us think one thing and half of us think the other. And I hate to, I want everybody to know what they're voting on. Madam Chair, you do have a motion on the table. Just wanted to let you know. Right. So we do have a motion to establish city remote revenue collection sites. If you vote yes, it will go through. If you vote no, we can do it with referring it back to the treasurer. Would that be correct?
Yes.
Okay, all those in favor say aye.
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 Those opposed?
No.
No.
Okay, roll call. Councilman Muscat?
No.
Councilman Conston?
No.
Councilman Abdal Hock?
No.
Councilman Abdullah?
And I, Council Chair, I just want to clarify, we're voting right now if we're gonna, based on my motion or based on tabling it?
On your motion, because then we're gonna refer it back to treasurer to bring back the next meeting.
No.
Councilman Baydun?
Yes.
Councilman Wensel?
No.
Melanowski Maxwell is no. So at this time, does someone want to make a notion to refer this back to the treasurer?
Council Chair?
Councilman Muscat?
I move that the city council refer nine A for, back to Treasurer Hicks Clayton for clarification.
Support.
Support by Councilman Abdal Hock. Is there any further discussion before we vote? All those in favor say aye.
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 Those opposed? The ayes have it. Okay, next, we have Treasurer Hicks Clayton, overtaxed CSO bond balance bank account.
Madam Chair.
Councilman Baydun?
Councilman Abdal can have it if he wants.
Councilman Abdullah?
Okay. Um, I move that the Dearborn Heights City Council authorize the city treasurer to open a Comerica bank account for the city overtaxed CSO bond balance and transfer from the water and sewage account, the total overtaxed CSO bond balance as determined by Plant Moran to the new designated Comerica bank account as outlined in item nine B.
Support.
For by Councilman Abdal Hock? Is there any discussion?
Madam Chair.
I, I got Councilman Conston with his hand up and then Councilman Abdullah and Councilman Baydun?
Madam Chair, I didn't ask to raise my hand.
Okay, Councilman Conston?
Thank you. And very briefly, I'd ask our city attorney or the mayor, by calling the account the overtaxed CSO, I mean, I recall at great length all the discussion, but it is, there's really, I think, a problem labeling it officially that account overta, you know, overtax money if, if some resident wants to file some kind of a class action lawsuit or something. So I would move to, uh, just call it the city CSO bond balance and take out the word overtaxed.
Yeah.
Madam Chair?
Okay, first I have Director Jawad.
Yes, hi. You know, just one thing I kind of, I'm not sure because we're talking about a bunch of different things. I think we're mixing them up with a couple of other things. Uh, this is basically the city decided to make the first payment on the new CSO payment out of the overtaxation amount, right? So we're basically creating this new bank account to put this money into for a couple of months until we make that payment from there, which we're gonna use those funds to make the first payment. Uh, so I mean, this is all gonna be relieved in, in like several months. Uh, so we're, we're, we're creating all this work and this is Plant Moran I'm working with and getting opinions from and hey, best practices and what other cities do. And it just seems like we're creating a lot of extra work there for something that's gonna be taken care of within a couple of months. Uh, as far as the last thing, and not to go back to anything, but just to kind of remind people about what that was about. And yes, it wasn't the kiosks. That was just basically for you to approve all the sites in Dearborn Heights that have money collections in one way or another. They were, we wanted to get, not me, but like the treasurer needs to get it approved by city council to accept money in one way or another. So, you know, you guys know we switched over to credit cards and stuff for the department heads to use. But this is for any place, like if you go to the library, you want to buy a library card or you want to pay a late fee. They have a drawer there, so they collect cash. So they're basically asking for your approval to be able to do that on, in those sites. Unless I'm missing something outside of that, that's my understanding of it. Thank you very much, council.
Thank you. I have Councilman Abdullah. Did you still have a question?
Well, just, just a statement and agree or disagree, right or wrong. But I'd like to commend Councilman Zohair Abdal Hock for keeping this particular issue in front of everybody and keeping it in discussion. And if nothing else, it holds all administrations accountable and knows that, you know, people are watching. So again, it doesn't matter if he's right or wrong at this particular point. I just commend him for keeping that in front of everybody. Thank you.
I have Councilman Baydun?
Madam Chair, I'm sorry, I, I said I didn't need to raise my hand.
Thank you. Next, I have Councilman Abdal Hock.
Thank you. Thank you, Councilman Abdullah. I appreciate it. And this has been going on for six, seven years. And we brought it in front of the city council many times. The amount was six point eight million dollars over levy, over taxation as it was stated by Miller Canfield letter to the city. It's not balance, it's nothing. It was over taxation and over levy to the residents. And luckily, we caught it in twenty fifteen and we stopped the old administration from keep going, doing what they were doing. And this money has to be separated. It has to be accounted for. It has to have line item even for one day. Otherwise, it is mixed with other funds. So I suggest we approve this immediately and let the treasurer open that account because it's not going to cost the city lots of money, probably a few dollars, no more, no less. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Next, I have Councilman Conston.
Briefly, and I, again, I, I would also like to commend Councilman Zuhair Abdal Hock for all the work he did. And as we all recall, the, the millage was, kept being collected after the project was paid off. And the attorney from Miller Canfield said, we're gonna, this is gonna be our first down payment for the new twenty-five million dollar bond. I just am concerned and I would like to see if our city attorney or anyone has any thoughts one way or the other. It, it, and I do remember Plant Moran saying that the, the people were overtaxed, but just labeling the account, um, overtax money instead of, uh, surplus funds, available funds, or just calling it the city CSO bond balance from the prior bond project, from the prior bond. City Attorney Miyaki, do you have any thoughts on that?
Well, I don't see that we would have liability. The statute actually provides for a mechanism for doing this. Uh, these, uh, that's, it should not take place. But again, budgets, these types of things are estimates and sometimes they are not done correctly. So in this situation, I don't see this as being a problem, particularly because we are complying with the statute and having the money, uh, set aside and being used for a like type of debt per the charter. Uh, the money has to be actually in a separate account. Perhaps a better term would be excessive as opposed to overtaxed, excessive levy. Um, that would also be a way to end up stating it and I would have no objection to that. Thank you.
Ma- Madam Chair?
Okay, I, next I have Chief of Staff Hernandez and then I got Mr. Jamal and then you'll be next.
Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just wanted to, um, bring what I have learned so far with this process. Uh, the six million dollars that Mr. Abdal Hock mentioned, I have not seen that in our budget. However, I do see an account fifty-nine, I mean, five nine two zero 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 three nine five one oh five, special levy restriction. We do already have a restricted acc. Special levy restriction. We do already have a restricted account with three million eight hundred sixty eight thousand five hundred and thirty three dollars. That is already in a restricted bank account, which is just for the water department. Uh, per the conversations that I've had with Plant Moran and Mr. Jawad. That is an appropriate account to have it because it is already a separate bank account. The restriction that we are facing is that our current charter does require a separate bank account. But as far as the recommendations of the CPAs, it is truly up to the council to decide whether they wanna move this money to a new bank account or not. The cost of having a new bank account is approximately three thousand dollars and additional work in the next year's audit. Um, again, that's what Mr. Jawad was referring to. It's a lot of work to have that money being moved for five months. Because we will be using those funds to pay for the first bond payment in March. So again, it's the decision of the council, but that is how I've understood it so far, um, with the process that we've had.
Thank you. Next we have Mr. Jamal.
Um, I do second our corporation council on whether nominating that as over taxation, because it was in fact over taxation or nominating excessive over taxation or excessive taxation, it will serve the same meaning. Over taxation would indicate more uh, of an illustration of a violation under appendix B. Uh, violation of the revised municipal finance act or an order used under the emergency municipal act law. The, the, the following item violate not exhaustively would be violation of the requirement of the revised municipal act. Public Act thirty four of two thousand one, NCL one forty one, two one oh one dash one four one to eight to one. Or an order issued under the emergency municipal act, public act two forty three of nineteen eighty as amended by NCL one forty one nine thirty one, dash one forty one, nine forty two. It's state all the way down to number seven. Access tax levy of dead service purpose. This is a violation. If you do an access tax levy, you don't really need it. It says that you need to consider every time you do a renewal for the levy. The balance of the bond collected specifically for purpose of paying debt for a bond. So both access and actually did not in the past. Probably since years, two thousand maybe eleven, twelve, I don't know. But to accumulate by two thousand fifteen, three thousand eight hundred after calculation of payment based on Councilman Zuhair will have six point eight million dollars. It's not because we had to pay the balance, but the calculation of Plant Moran, it stays. It is certified by a CPA to be around three point eight million dollars. Those three point eight million dollars state in the accountant. Meaning, you know, in the account of the water budget. Those three point eight million dollars were defined by the auditor as a restricted fund. Okay, that's numerically. That's what we call bookkeeping. That's not delete. Delete is where the money at. The, the, the water fund have more than three or four bank accounts right now. None of this account, and I explained that in the past to you, madam chair, to the mayor, to everybody. Those accounts are not separated and si- and, and none of them, one of them being used specifically to segregate, okay, the money, the meat. To segregate that in a separate bank account specifically as expressed by the charter. All levies, all money collected to pay debt supposed to be in a bank account. There's a distinguished, okay, and legislative process between number which can be separated and real meat. The meat is the money. Where is the money? Can you touch the money separately and the bank account say, this is the money separated, collected interest. The interest being added there and presented to the public in that way. The answer is no. From the auditing point of view, which is auditing the numbers, it's okay, it's kosher. To keep, to keep it separate there. The problem is, nobody knew. It went to eight years based on separation and numbers when there is no bank account actually to say this are separated. Now, to me, one day, to me, one day, according to my standard of compliance. And I know it's according to my standard of compliance. We need to follow the charter. We need to follow the bond regulation, which is stated very, very and, and revenue bond act of nineteen thirty three extra, act ninety four of nineteen thirty two. One forty one, one, one five bond, deposit and investment of sale proceeds. Section fifteen, it's stated, you know, it tells you that the fund, I mean, it's, it's, it's very large. But it tells us the money, borrowing, you know, it should be regulated. It should be not put more than two million dollars in one account. It's, it's regulated by the federal government. Uh, so.
Director Jamal, we're not in school here.
Point of order, please. Let him speak.
Order, my friend, because after seven years, there's still some questions about this over taxation. Violation of the state law, of the federal law, of the, of the city charter. And nobody did anything yet about it. It's time to close the chapter, move the money, keep them in a bank account. Accommodate for a recommended interest since the two thousand fifteen, move on, close the chapter and pay whatever you wanna pay in the future for this money. There is no conflict whatsoever between the treasurer of the city exercising her authority to manage her depository fund. The treasurer of the city works based on meat, money, bank account, depository account. It doesn't work based on accounting, you know, booking and auditing standard. They work based on where is the meat at. This is how the treasury decided she wanna do, according to her belief and understanding on the charter. Second, I did spoke with CPA, Ms. Lawrence. And she is the, she is the government accounting, you know, for Plant Moran. And she said that this account, because the treasurer asked me to, to clarify this. This particular bank account will cost, actually, it's not even on the plate of cost by Plant Moran. It doesn't cost nothing. I certified with the treasurer, Lizzy Hicks Clayton, Miss Hicks Clayton. That she has already a free reserve bank at Chase. I just don't understand why is this discussion taking place to begin with?
Thank you.
Open an account?
Okay.
I recommend, you know, that she open an account with the money. It doesn't.
That's all you needed to say. That's all you needed to say, Hassan.
Okay, thank you. At this time I have, at this time, I'm sorry, Mr. Jamal. We're going too far here. I have council, I have some more people that need to speak. I have Councilman Abdal Hawk. Go ahead, please.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I mean, I learned so much from Mr. Jamal over the years.
Yeah.
Uh, but I just want to make sure that everybody understand in two thousand fifteen there was six point eight million dollars over levy on the CSO bond. And that's what Plant Moran, if we all remember, when they came in front of us in a study session. They confirmed the number six point eight million dollars, not the three point eight. We paid out of the six point eight around three million dollars for other project, which I don't wanna go down the road to see if they qualify to get that money or not. That's why I'm moving away from that. So that, that money which is left, the three point eight has, or six point eight, they collected interest. And nobody of us ever know how much interest was collected in where that money is. I simply want to make sure that this money is on the side in a separate account. When I moved eight hundred thousand dollars, we all remember from the bag account and I put it in Comerica Bank. They gave me the account for free because we are, we are one of the largest depositors in that bank. So the issue of a three thousand dollars, it's going to cost us to move this money to an account. I don't know who came up with it and where it came from. I encourage my colleague to vote to put this money in a separate account, period. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. And last we have Director Jawad, Jawad.
Okay, I, I, I'd be honest, listening to everybody, that's fine. I mean, my opinion is basically it's up to city council. You guys can do whatever you want. I mean, I'm just learning out a couple of things, cause we're making it look like, oh, this is not legal or this is this or this is that. Uh, I mean, according to Plant Moran and, and I would cautious, caution everybody when somebody says that this person wants to do something, I would ask that person instead of just taking, you know, what somebody tells you they wanted to do. Because I've had conversations with the treasurer as well and not specifically just about this account, just in general. If you talk to Plant Moran and I suggest at some point you do like a study session with someone from Plant Moran and they can tell you what best practices are. That, there's no other city that has like as many bank accounts to, that we're saying we have to segregate cash. Everybody segregates it through the general ledgers. I mean, it comes down on, on, on red tape and, and being able to do things and we're gonna end up having to hire three, four people just because of all these different things and we keep acting like, and I'm, I'm, I'm not gonna name who, but it's like, oh, just create this, do this, do that. And I'm not saying, uh, uh, I'm, Councilman Abdal Hawk, I'm not saying anything against you here. You, you know, personally.
I know you don't.
I understand. I, I trust you and everything. I have no problem with that. I'm just saying, that's a big picture. You know, we, we have to, we have to look at the big picture in some cases, but ultimately it's up to you guys. We do whatever you guys want.
This time, I think it's time for us to vote on this. Does, does everybody kind of agree on that?
Yeah, yes.
Mr. Jamal, you've had an, an ample enough time to speak. Is it okay if we skip you on this one? Okay, all those in favor say aye. Those opposed? The ayes have it. Okay, let's do a roll call vote. Councilman Muscat?
Yeah, yes.
Councilman Conston?
No.
Councilman Abdal Hawk?
Yes.
Councilman Abdullah?
Yes.
Councilman Badu?
Yes.
Councilman Wensel?
Yes.
Malowski Maxwell, yes, motion passes. Next item on the account, on the, on the agenda is Chief of Staff Hernandez. Office three sixty five mitigation process.
Council Chair?
Councilman Muscat?
I moved that the Dearborn Heights City Council approved the office three sixty five mitigation, uh, proposal in the amount of fourteen thousand nine hundred and one dollars and twenty five cents. And authorized the mayor clerk and chief of staff to sign the proposal, proposal. Additionally, authorized corporation council to prepare a contract and authorized the mayor and clerk to sign a contract. Furthermore, authorized the mayor and comptroller to sign the necessary warrants not to exceed fourteen thousand nine hundred and one dollars and twenty five cents. And authorized the treasurer to issue payment as outlined in nine C.
Support by Councilman Conston. Is there any discussion?
Council Chair?
Councilman Badu?
Thank you so much. And this is to our Chief of Staff Hernandez. This is awesome. I love to see that our community in our, our city is becoming a little more tech savvy here. I'm surprised that we didn't have this. Uh, and I know having, uh, some discussions with her, she was letting me know that she was bringing this on. I was so happy to hear this. I know this, we're supposed to be, it's a discussion, it's not kudos, but kudos on this because I, as somebody who's a millennial. Um, and who Councilman Abdullah is not gonna be so familiar with this kind of things, but I could tell you as a millennial, I'm very familiar with this. So thank you so much to Mrs. Hernandez. Yes, um, are we only on nine C?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Councilman Muscat?
I just wanna inform Councilman Badu, I was using Outlook and, uh, office uh, when he was probably, uh, still playing in basketball shorts in grade school. So I think David Abdullah was also.
Hey, Councilman, your, your, your video's not turned on. Council Muscat? There you go. Thank you.
There's that face. There's that beautiful face.
Okay, is there any further discussion before we vote on this? All those in favor say aye. Those opposed? The ayes have it. Next we have Comptroller Jawad. Fiscal year twenty twenty two budget amendment.
Council Chair?
Councilman Muscat?
I moved the Dearborn Heights City Council approved the fa- uh, following year two zero two two budget amendment to appropriate for the implementation of MIDC operating budget. Grant reviews of two hundred and fourteen thousand five hundred and fifty dollars for account number two six zero. Yeah, zero 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 dash five four eight point one three zero. Grant expense, attorney legal fees of two hundred and fourteen thousand five hundred and fifty dollars for account two six zero dash one three zero. Uh, dash eight four eight point one three zero. It is necessary to remove the general fund original grant review. Appropriation of two hundred and fourteen thousand five hundred dollars for account one zero one dash zero 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 dash five four eight point one three oh, which would be absorbed by the general fund, unrestricted fund balance. In addition, authorized the mayor comptroller to sign a warrant and treasurer to make the transfer as outlined in nine D.
Support by Councilman Badu. Is there any discussion? All those in favor say aye. Those opposed? Sorry, Councilman Wensel, you're muted again. Can we leave you unmuted so we can hear your vote? Okay, let's take that again. All those in favor say aye. Those opposed? The ayes have it. Okay, next we have Fire Chief Brogan, permission to pay Western Wayne County Mutual Aid Association dues. Councilman Abdullah?
I moved that the Dearborn Heights City Council approved payment for dues for the membership in the Western Wayne County Fire Department Mutual Aid Association in the amount of twelve thousand two hundred and forty three thousand eighty four cents. In addition, authorized the mayor and comptroller to sign and warrant, I'm sorry, sign the warrant. And the treasurer to issue payment from dues and membership account, one zero one dash three three five dash eight zero two, period zero zero zero. Is outlined in item nine E.
Support by Councilman Badu. Is there any discussion?
Madam Chair?
Councilman Abdullah?
I, I, I'd just like to, first of all, commend, um, our, uh, fire department for being members of the mutual aid. And I'd like to, if you don't mind, have our fire chief take the opportunity, just at the very minimal for the residents, cause I know when I started in the council, I had no idea what this is and, and I see huge advantages in this for our residents. So if you don't mind, if the fire chief can go at least a thirty minute, thirty second. Briefing of, of what this is all about and what the advantages to residents is. Thank you.
Sure, yeah, I would gladly give you a thirty minute presentation on that if you'd like. No, it, yes, but ba- basically it's a formal agreement. So all of the surrounding communities, we work together when there's, um, certain emergencies, we just don't have enough staff to handle, um, but a, a really large event. Like if you get something really big happening, then we have people on duty and so we all, we all pitch in and help each other out. Also, if we get multiple runs happening at the same time, then they come in and they help out with, with, with the other runs. Or if we have like a house fire in one area and then we get a rescue run in another area, then the, the other communities will pitch in and, and we'll take care of one another. So that's mostly what it's for, but we also have special operations teams as part of this and we have our, our hazmat team and we have our USAR team. Which are some of the best teams in the entire state, I should say. Um, and so that, that will handle any kind of a hazardous material incident or a, a USAR covers all kinds of different, uh, technical rescue groups. And so, so that, that's, that's the service that we get for, for, um, being a part of this group.
But you also exchange equipment that other cities may not have. But you also exchange equipment that other cities may not have. So for example, I remember when we purchased the ladder truck. I, I remember yourself, Chief, mentioning that we were one of very few cities around here that have that.
Yeah, yeah. And then, uh, and another thing that we, we were just talking about the paratech struts. I don't know if you saw, we, um, I know we just did a mayor, uh, video with this with the mayor also, but we have the ability now of these, with these paras, paras struts, paratech struts that can actually lift heavy trucks. So sometimes you get cars underneath semis. And instead of having to wait for a big wrecker that can come and lift it, we actually have the ability to lift a truck that big now. And so we're one of the only ones right now that has that. And so we, we certainly can share those kinds of things. So the hazmat team has, has, uh, access to a drone. We have some drone pilots. And, and so, um, that, yeah, there, there are lots of, lots of ways that we use this organization. And we're also a member of, uh, HEMS, which sets all of our medical control. And, uh, so, so it's a group of doctors that oversees all of, all of our protocols and basically the steps that we take. And so we have a seat on that board as well through, through HEMS. And so, um, yeah, there, there, there's a lot, there's a lot of things that we get out of this mutilated agreement.
Great. Thank you. Thank you, Chief.
Thank you. Any further discussion before we vote on this? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the ayes have it. Next, we have Fire Chief Brogan, permission to purchase thermal imaging cameras with an A F G grant.
Council Chair.
Councilman Muscat.
I moved the Dearborn Heights City Council approve the purchase of three thermal imaging cameras in the amount of fifteen thousand one hundred and fifty dollars. This purchase is being funded as part of a previously accepted A F G grant, ten thousand one hundred and fifty, and an M M R A, M M R M A grant of five thousand dollars. In addition, authorize the mayor comptroller to sign the warrant upon receipt and the treasurer to issue payment from capital outlay account number one zero one dash three three five dash nine eight one point zero 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 as outlined in nine F.
Support.
Support by Councilman Abdul Haq. Is there any discussion?
Man, Chair.
Councilman Abdullah.
Just, just want to say one sense in regards to this advantages of this, uh, particular thing for our fire department is these are used to see, I'm sorry, these are used at fires to see through smoke to assist in fire rescue and suppression activities, and also to detect heat behind walls and in void spaces. So this is a very good idea for our fire department. Thank you.
Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the ayes have it. Next, we have Fire Chief Brogan, permission to purchase medical screening with an A F G grant also.
Man, Chair.
Councilman Conston.
I, uh, move that we concur with Chief Brogan and authorize the purchase of medical services for health screening, cancer and cardiac of our firefighters as provided by Site Med as outlined in N I G.
Support.
Support by Councilman Baydun. Is there any discussion?
Madam Chair.
Councilman Abdul Haq.
Just want to thank, uh, the fire department, especially the chief, for all what they have been doing to bring this fire department really with the latest technology. Thank you very much for what you're doing, Chief.
Thank you. Any further discussion? All those in favor. Madam Chair, Madam Clerk.
Uh, yeah, in the, in the motion, we need to indicate, um, to authorize the mayor and comptroller to sign the warrant and the treasurer to issue payment from the contractual service account so that they can make that payment.
And authorize the, uh, mayor and clerk to sign and the treasurer to issue payment upon warrant.
Thank you.
Okay. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the ayes have it. Next, I have Library Director McCaffrey, L S T A Public Library Services Grant Award.
Council Chair.
Councilman Muscat.
I moved that the Dearborn Heights City Council concurrent accept the L S T A Public Library Service Grant Award in amount of twenty-five thousand dollars. This is a reimbursement grant and requires a revenue G L account number line entitled grant reimbursement. Expenditures will come out of the capital outlay in the budget per best practices outlined in nine H.
Support.
Support by Councilman Baydun. Is there any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the ayes have it. Next, we have Police Chief Myers Budget Amendment.
Man, Chair.
Councilman Abdullah.
Um, I move that the Dearborn Heights City Council approve the budget amendment to increase the JAG, J A G, Grant Purchase Account one oh one dash three zero zero dash nine eight one point zero five six by four thousand two hundred and thirty dollars and thirty-three cents. And decrease the police contractual service account one oh one dash three zero zero dash eight one eight period zero 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 by four thousand two hundred and thirty dollars and thirty-three cents. In addition, authorize a comptroller to amend the budget, general ledger account accordingly, is outlined in item nine I.
Support.
Support by Councilman Baydun. Is there any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the ayes have it. Next, we have Police Chief Myers Purchase and Payment of the Video Intercom Replacement.
Council Chair.
Councilman Muscat.
I moved the Dearborn Heights City Council per, approve the purchase of video intercom in the amount of four thousand two hundred and thirty dollars. In addition, authorize the mayor and comptroller to sign the warrants and the treasurer to issue payment from JAG Grant Fund Account one zero one dash three hundred dash nine eight one point zero five six is outlined in nine J.
Support.
Support by Councilman Baydun. Is there any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the ayes have it. Next, we have Police Chief Myers Purchase and Payment of a twenty twenty-two Chevrolet Traverse.
Man, Chair.
Councilman Muscat.
I moved the Dearborn Heights City Co- uh, Council approve the budget, uh, approve the purchase of a twenty twenty-two Chevrolet, Chev- Chevrolet Traverse, the amount of twenty-seven thousand eight hundred and ninety-two dollars under the law enforcement state bid price. In addition, authorize the mayor comptroller to sign the warrant and the treasurer to issue payment from police capital outlay account one oh one dash three hundred dash nine eight one dash zero 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 as outlined in nine K. And I believe this was to replace a car that was totally, uh, destroyed and uh, is not repairable.
Support.
Councilman Abdullah, is there any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the ayes have it. Next, we have C E D D Director Hashem, uh, C D B G Fiscal Year 2019 Demolition Program Invoice.
Madam Chair.
Councilman Conston.
I move that the Dearborn Heights City Council approve the payment of invoice number two zero two one oh one from Thomas Trucking, Inc. In the amount of thirty thousand eight hundred and ninety-eight dollars for fiscal year two thousand nineteen C D B G demolition program for two zero seven five one powers, two five six five nine Annapolis and five four five two Kingston, uh, in Dearborn Heights demolitions. In addition, authorize the mayor and comptroller to sign the warrant and return check to the C E E D office and authorize the treasurer to sign payment in the amount of six thousand five hundred and ninety-seven dollars from fiscal year two thousand fifteen Good Neighbor Program, zero one oh, one oh three nine six oh nine seven zero point two one five and twenty-four thousand three hundred and one dollars for, from fiscal year two nineteen demolition program account number one oh three nine six zero nine seven zero two one nine for total of thirty thousand eight hundred and ninety-eight dollars as outlined in nine L.
Support.
Support by Councilman Abdul Haq. Is there any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the ayes have it. Next, I have Chief of Staff Hernandez Purchase and Payment of Microsoft 365 Plan G three.
Man, Chair.
Councilman Abdullah.
I move that the Dearborn Heights City Council approves the purchase of the Microsoft Office 365 Plan G three one year subscription license. Moreover, provided uh, the mayor also authorizes any such payment as a necessary expense. City council authorizes warrants to be issued for the payment of amounts towards the city's subscription licenses with the total amount of these payments not to exceed forty thousand zero three four point one zero. By doing so, the city council is authorizing any such warrant a payment without prior authorization by the city council of the specific warrant and payment as permitted by and consistent with City Charter, Section eight point nine, as outlined in item nine M.
Support.
Support by Councilman Conston, I'm sorry, Councilman Muscat. Is there any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the ayes have it. Next, we have Chief of Staff Hernandez Approval of Comcast Business Service Order.
Council Chair.
Councilman Muscat.
I moved that the Dearborn Heights City Council approve the Comcast Business Service Order and authorize the mayor to sign and attach document as outlined in nine N.
Support.
Support by Councilman Baydun. Is there any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the ayes have it. City Engineer Dib Hennessy Engineers Professional Services Contract.
Man, Chair.
Councilman Abdullah.
I move that the Dearborn Heights City Council award Hennessy Engineers a professional services contract to complete the M dot required bridge inspections and ratings in an amount of twenty-seven thousand dollars. In addition, authorize corporation council to prepare the necessary agreement with the selected firm and for the mayor and city clerk to sign said agreement. Furthermore, authorize the mayor and comptroller to sign warrants and treasurer to issue payment as outlined in item nine O.
Support.
Support by Councilman Conston. Is there any discussion?
Man, Chair.
Councilman Abdullah.
Um, I, I'd like to commend the administration, most specifically our engineer Ali Dib, uh, or deep for looking into this thing further than the traditional way that we've always looked into it. So and this is no disrespect or indication of weight trim good or bad. But over the years, we always used weight trim on a regular basis. And I know there was some, uh, concerns from some council members, and I know from the mayor, um, that too much money was going out to weight trim without us as council members, because it's not our field of expertise, knowing this is, you know, if this is money well spent. So I commend the administration and specifically Ali D. For going out and making sure that we get estimates and bids on this and getting another company that's gonna give us a better price than in the past. So thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Conston.
Thank you, Madam Chair. And I heartily agree with Councilman Abdullah. In the past, um, we've used Plant Moran for many, many things, including help writing grants and different things. I know for the Van Boren corridor, there was a gentleman, uh, well, we paid some sixty or seventy thousand dollars just for a presentation of a study that was done. When I was down river, I heard nothing but good things about Hennessy Engineering and, uh, competition is good and saves the city money. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Abdul Haq.
Thank you, Madam Chair. My question to, uh, Director Dib, uh, uh, do we have, uh, drawing and schematics for all these bridges? Is he there or?
He's muted.
Hi. Okay, uh, Councilman Abdul Haq, the, if, if your question is, they do exist on the map in, in the state bridge program. But if you're looking for engineering document as, 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 when they were built, uh, the answer is not, I'm not aware of any, no. These are old bridges as built is, that's not unique to the bridges, by the way. Um, we do not have a requirement in our city that I know of that require as-built or record drawings to be submitted in any form. So we are looking at a process change currently and, and the format. So for what we do have, we wanna scan them electronically. And going forward, all our projects will have that requirement in. So record drawing will be submitted in a format that we can use, i.e., you know, I have to buy the software, obviously, but they will be submitted electronically.
I wanna thank you for bringing to my attention that the city has to acquire for every project as-built drawing for every project we have.
And we started.
You for bringing this to my attention.
Thank you, Chair. And we started on, on the building side. So even on the, in the building department for permits going forward. So things like the, uh, development on Ford Road that we have, we wanted to get the final as-built because normally changes take place during construction. And what you submit for a permit is not exactly what you see at the final when the, when the project is completed. So that, that's another thing that we need, we need to work on. We are working on it now. Yes, sir.
Great.
Thank you. Next, we have Mr. Jamal.
Absolutely, from the compliance, the budgetary compliance, when we pay money on the budget, it must be in compliance with the charter. The charter uh, provision uh, section nine three specifications. No public improvement costing more than five thousand dollars should be const- contracted or commenced under drawings, profiles and estimates. For the same should have been submitted to the council and approved by it. And the copy therefore thereof shall here here after remain on file in the office of the clerk, which is permanent file forever. It is from the beginning until the end of the existence of the city. Uh, remain on the file in the office of the clerk, subject to inspection by the public. If it wasn't done in the past, it was violation gross violation of the charter. That's why Engineer Dib, after being discussing that with few of you were on the council before, and the mayor says, but we talked about it, it put forward. That's why no construction project will be go through a bit in the city without Engineer Ali as a P E certify the budget as a P E and approve the budget before uh, even before any further, even the project for small ones for C D B G for Kim Constant, Director, not, not, being stopped and being referred back to Engineer Ali. Even the houses am uh, forwarding, you know, for demolition. Engineer Ali is the listed uh, reference for engineering and, and construction. Even our application right now to FEMA. Engineer Ali is an ultimate to myself. Him and secondary, our other engineer, Mr. Conrad, Director Conrad, at the record with the state that they are the point of contact on the engineer. We are not doing this because I like it. We are not doing things or specifically myself compliance. I have, for every advice, I have fact reference. So please, when you need reference, what I say, ask, you'll find it. Thank you.
Discussion before we vote on this? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the ayes have it. Next, we have Corporation Council Miyaki Warren Valley Golf Course Status Quo Agreement.
Council Chair.
Councilman Baydun.
I move that the Dearborn Heights City Council approve the Warren Valley Golf Course Status Quo Agreement and to authorize Mayor Bezi and City Clerk Sunnya to execute the agreement on behalf of the city as outlined in nine P.
Support.
Support by Councilman Conston. Is there any discussion?
Man, Chair.
Councilman Abdullah.
Um, just want to say I'm absolutely against giving an extension of this agreement for one year. With due respect to the management agreement we currently have and the managerial team that's running it in uh, honestly, for lack of better words, I've been kind of disappointed. I realize the pandemic's there. I realize everything that's been going on. But there's been multiple things I've had concerns about. We've asked multiple times to find out what kind of income is it bringing in To the city and we need reports on that. We have not received it. As far as just visually looking, and again, I realize there's a pandemic, I just have not seen much new outside the box activities there to create. Uh, you know, more foot traffic, more people going there, more people doing stuff there. Um, I'm, I'm still also concerned about the lack of. Um, uh, people using the hall for the services, including specifically locally. Uh, less residents use it a lot of times because there's not a, a, a full possible halal menu. Again, many, many things that can be done. I don't know if we need a study session on this, but I'm personally definitely not in favor of giving them an extension for one year. I would vote no on that. Uh, at, at the, at, what I will be willing to do is ideally either month to month or maximum. Ninety days or a hundred and twenty days. Thank you.
Next, I have Corporate Council Miyaki.
Well, the idea is to basically make sure that we have sufficient time to actually address the issues that need to be addressed. If there's going to be any sort of a change. You should recognize that the city as the assignee of county with respect to the Warren Valley Golf Course. Has the ability to cancel the agreement with or without cause. Uh, provided it follows certain notice provisions. So we do have options with respect. To canceling the agreement and replacing uh the concession year if we need to do so. Right now, we have no agreement in place. This is necessary to make sure that we have something in place. So everyone understands what the obligations of the parties are. Without the agreement, we will just have chaos and potentially invite litigation. So I strongly urge you uh to approve this agreement and to authorize the signatures as outlined in my correspondence. Thank you.
Corp- Corporation Council Miyaki, uh, although I respect your statement, I totally understand where you come from, from a legal standpoint. But that does not necessarily mean that we have to approve this for a full year. For me, even if it's psychologically telling whoever's there right now, whether it's them or somebody else, that you're okay for one year. Yes, we could cancel it anytime, but as you know, most people start to relax and feel comfortable if they've got one year. To me, if we give him sixty, even if you gave him sixty, let's say hypothetically, you could always extend it. Same way you could cancel it if you gave him one year. So to me, I would not give one year approval on this. I'm totally against it. I, I, I'm okay with a hundred and twenty days or six months, but much shorter than one year.
Well, Council Chair, if I may.
Go ahead. Yeah, we have a motion on the table. We have to address that first.
Madam Chair, they have a discussion.
Right. I guess what I'm, what I'm looking at with regard to this is this is necessary to end up having. Sufficient time. And again, what you could do is end up putting out RFP package. And then uh make a decision and then discontinue things if you wanted to discontinue things. But this gives, make sure that we have sufficient time to end up addressing things.
Is six months sufficient time, um, Corporation Council? Hundred eighty days?
It, it may be, but this is something that gives us more certainty with respect to having that time. And having some clarity in terms of the relationship. Because that's one of the problems. My understanding is that, for example, the county hasn't ended up doing something. As a result, Mr. Burgsrod actually believes that they've exercised an option. To uh continue the agreement for an extra five years, potentially. I think there's a real ambiguity in terms of the understanding. I explained to him, we need to have some clarity and that's why we need to have this agreement. And again, we have the option to cancel with or without cause upon giving sufficient notice. So, you know, I don't look at it as being problematic for, for, to say the one year. And this binds him for up to that one year. And. With all due respect to this honorable body. Sometimes these decisions take some time to end up being made. Um, and we need to make sure that there's sufficient time to end up making a decision, particularly because. We don't necessarily know if we're gonna have the same city council. We may have a lot of people who uh have a lot to learn. Uh, being on the council. So, you know, there's uh, there's some learning issues as well.
Council Chair.
Go ahead, Councilman Abdullah.
So, so I have a question for the uh mayor or maybe someone within his administration that can answer this. In the past twelve months, well, let's, let's forget twelve months, this year alone. Just this year alone, how much money has been brought in? By the current concession manager to our city? And I realize nobody's gonna have exact numbers. I realize that. Just approximately, whether it's Controller, the Treasurer, the Mayor, anybody could answer that. Just approximately. How much money was brought in by what we are doing right now in the first ten months of the year, roughly? I know it's not exact, just roughly. Cause we've asked for this multiple times in the past, we've not received it.
Council Chair.
Go ahead, Mayor. Councilman, please. Mayor, go ahead, please.
It's whatever is the least agreement, Council, pro tem. I mean, the least agreement, it's not like you're getting any profits. It's whatever the, the least agreement's for.
Okay, so how, how much are we bringing in approximately? If you don't mind, I, I don't know.
I don't have the figures in front of me, but I get it for you tomorrow morning.
Okay, that's fair. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, I have Councilman Abdul Haq.
Thank you, Madam Chair, very much. Uh, I have a few questions to Mr. Miyaki. Uh, first, what, what you mean by status quo agreement?
Status quo, right, if I, if I may, Council Chair.
Sure, go ahead.
At this time, right now, the city is standing in the shoes of the county uh in relation to the concession year, Oneida. Uh, that is, is we have been assigned the concession agreement between uh the county and Oneida. Uh, to the extent that it pertains to the Warren Valley Golf Course. So essentially, what this would mean is that we would continue to stand in that sort of relationship. With the county or with, I'm sorry, Oneida until such time as we either decide to terminate. Uh, the overall concession agreement. Or we end up basically being in a position where we continue something along those lines. It also means. That the pay schedule remains the same as during the last year of the agreement. In all other terms of the agreement, except as expressly addressed. In this status quo agreement would remain the same. So that includes and expressly includes the ability of the city to terminate. The underlying concession agreement uh with or without cause at its, at its choice. So, um, you know, I've made that very clear in my discussions uh with Mr. Burgsrod.
You stated that they exercised their option for four, five, uh, five more years.
No, I, if I, if I may, if I may. I stated that Mr. Burgsrod believed that they exercised their option. But in actuality, from what I can tell, they did not exercise their option. And this is what ends up happening when you sometimes don't end up having. An agreement in place is that people start to believe things about what the status is between the parties. That is not necessarily true. The ambiguity in the situation invites people to come up with claims. And that's why this agreement is important because, for example. It states on page two, paragraph three, not election of option to extend concession agreement. This agreement shall not be deemed or construed to be the exercise by the city. Of any option under Article Roman numeral four of the concession agreement to extend the concession agreement. So this is being done to make sure that everyone will, understands what their rights and responsibilities are. And the city, city still has uh control in this situation. I'd also note that any change that takes place is actually, and, and I might correct myself with respect what Councilman Abdullah. Previously asked about the six months or the one year. If there's going to be a change, there will have to end up also being a change with respect to the liquor license. And that could end up taking several months to go through. Uh, so that we also have to be mindful of.
Now.
Thank you.
Who owns the liquor license?
The liquor license is actually. Jointly held between the city and Oneida, but because the city owns the property. The city basically controls who would ultimately be able to end up getting it. But right now, both the city and Oneida are on liquor license.
Okay, I wanna say.
Wait, it's not like a normal liquor license. In other words, you use the term ownership. Because it is a golf course liquor license, it is basically specifically. Assigned to that particular location, namely the golf course.
Okay, uh. In the budget, I believe we have revenue from Oneida at sixty thousand dollars a year. But in the contract which you want us to approve. The, it said margin of profit. Who control the books? Who knows how much, especially this mostly cash business? Are we losing revenue because nobody goes and, you know, inspect the, the books or see? How much liquor they bought, how much liquor they sold? And what is the minimum we will, we are willing to accept as it is in the contract that? Is it the sixty thousand dollars?
Well, there is a specific. There is a specific amount in terms of minimum fees. Uh, that are in the contract. However, we are also supposed to receive the greater of those minimum fees and how much we receive proportionally. And so that is a matter of actually accounting needing to be done to make that determination. And it is supposed to be done in part per our agreement with the county in conjunction with the county. So because um, essentially Inkster Valley is the county's. Uh, golf course and is also covered by the concession agreement. And then there's supposed to be a breakdown in the fees. That if Oneida pays them to the county, then the city is supposed to end up getting a share of those. Either directly from Oneida or through the county. I don't know how that's been administered. Um, since this came into uh place, so I can't address that.
I, I really would like to join with Mr. David Abdullah. That we give him either at the most, at the most, six months by six months. And I encourage the administration since we fought so much before, before I came to the city council that. Our mayor and our chairperson and, uh, you know, some of the members of the council. They fought so hard to keep the. Golf course as a golf course and to improve it in a way to attract more traffic to it. To make probably membership for our resident to, to become the icon. And the place to visit by our residents. So I like the administration to start immediately looking, please, at. Some management company, including Oneida, to bid on this. And we tell them what we really are looking for, what we want to do. And this pro- property must stay golf course, never to change its way, the way it is. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, before I go on, on Mr. Jamal, I lowered your hand because I already have you on the list. It's not necessary to keep raising the hand. Okay, next I have Councilman Wenzel.
Yeah, thank you. Um, all due respect to uh Councilman Abdul Haq and uh, uh, Abdullah. Six-month contract would, would bring us to uh March of twenty twenty-two, the, around the beginning of the golf season. And the last thing you wanna do is change hands of, of management right at the beginning of a season. Uh, that's, that's when they start planning the whole thing and. Maybe the current the management might be looking for something else to do if he's not, not guaranteed the summer. Uh, the best thing we'd do to extend it a year from now and look into it a year from now at the, toward the end of the golf season. And um, the way our contract is, I don't know the exact numbers, but the city has guaranteed a certain percentage. Or certain um, amount per month from the management company. Um, a higher rate during the summer and a lower rate during the off-season. And uh, and as far as any extra money goes, I'm not sure it's particulars, but. Just because they make a lot of money doesn't mean that we're gonna make a lot of money. It's, it's in his best interest to make as much money as possible. And to defend him a little bit on a normal year from. Don't quote me on this, but a normal year, we might have uh seven or nine. Days out of the golf season that are canceled because of rain. And this year, we're up over thirty to forty days canceled because of rain. And cleaning off the golf course takes a lot of time and uh. The takes away from the effort to be doing new things. So. I think they're doing a great job, what they're doing right now with what they have to work with. And I'm in favor of giving the extension.
Okay, next I have Chief of Staff Hernandez.
He's muted.
I have asked her on mute. There's a delay.
I just wanted to point out what Mr. Abdul Haq said, which is that um, we do have sixty thousand dollars budgeted for the golf course. Uh, the last time I checked. Um, last fiscal year, we had received about fifty-eight thousand from them. Um, so that's the most. Clear numbers I have, but we can definitely look into that later.
Thank you.
Okay, next I have Mr. Jamal.
Again, because of the budget involving. You may recognize that up to date on the statement that the controller. Send as a monthly report on behalf of the mayor. There is no posting for any revenue on that particular line item. The budgeted item is sixty thousand dollars, which we expect. Uh, one of the reason I. I really discussed that not extensively. Uh, but with the mayor that we are gonna wait to, to see, you know, which one the calculation is higher. Whether the amount that we are gonna receive or the amount that they are generating. So far, uh, we, we don't have uh that number. That's why you see there is no revenue as of. August thirty-first on the general ledger. Uh, mandatory report by the controller slash the mayor. To alert the council to uh the uh. The revenue versus the. Versus the expenditures according to the charter, similar to. What the treasurer is supposed to also provide in monthly reports according to the charter. To keep the oversight process of the financial status of the city. Uh, in coordination with the mayor. So one of the reason, I promise you, this is gonna be. Uh, one of the things that we are gonna be working on to make the evaluation. So far, there is no, at this time, a mechanism. To uh, to control or to, to see, but we can always track somehow. The revenue of uh, of that particular. Uh, s- source of revenue and uh, uh, thank you, Councilman Tom. He discussed with me. Because it related to the budget and the revenue of the budget and I explained to. And I promised him that this is gonna be a discussion. I did discuss that with the mayor. A few times and he agreed. And the mayor can issue his direction to the controller uh soon and to the treasurer to see which way. They will be proceeding and calculating, uh, you know, that income. So please, you know, be assured that uh, the mayor on the top of that. He understand that, but sometime, you know, it takes uh, it takes a process. We inherited no process how to calculate that. I don't know, it, it was paid, uh, Madam Chair, one time at the end of the year. Or a couple of times during the year or quarterly, but I know for sure that the other resource. Uh, that is similar to that in each sport is paying on a monthly basis and is being accounted on a monthly basis. So this is all what I can say. Uh, from the budgetary compliance point of view, not interfering with nobody's business. As you know, I don't do other people's business in the city. I only do compliance when it's required, related to the budget. And the grant of the city as being directed by the mayor. That's my job. Have a great day.
Thank you. Next, I have Councilman Conston.
Thank you, Madam Chair. And I, I agree with Councilman Wenzel. Um, the current operator's been there. He's been there a while. I, I believe he owns the equipment. And um. In the business world, maybe Gary Miyaki could chime in. in the business world, maybe Gary Miyaki could chime in. A year is, is really not a lot of time to Councilman Abdullah's point. You know, I think everyone would like to see the banquet facility advertised more and used more. We really don't know how much it's being used, but it's first and foremost a golf center, a golf course, I'm sorry. And I know that the current operators booking golf outings and leagues and so forth and is doing whatever he can to develop the golf course end of it. So I think a year, though it sounds like a long time to get, it would take at least that long, I would think, to get anybody else in place negotiating, signing a contract to get any other operator in place. Thank you.
Thank you. Next I have Councilman Badum.
Thank you so much, Madam Chair. I know we've spent way too much time on this subject. But I just want to say, I'd like to see the banquet hall just somewhat renovated, maybe. Maybe we can even expand it, use it more often, maybe host some weddings, advertise, publish it. Maybe we can post things on our website. Just so we can be a little bit more accessible, we can bring in more revenue to the city. Thank you so much. I'd like to go ahead and make a vote on this so we can just move on with this. Thank you.
Okay, Councilman Muscat.
Council Chair, with all due respect, you, you and I both know it's gonna take a, a long time to find someone to operate a golf course.
Yes.
And, and, and Councilman Wenzel hit the nail right on the head. There aren't many companies out there that's gonna come in and operate your golf course on the start. We need time and, and I think maybe even one year, maybe even too short to do this. Okay? Councilman Wenzel's correct. It's gonna take us to March. Golf season starts. Leagues want to play. They're not gonna know what's going to go on if the, if the operation is shut down. They'll go elsewhere. We'll really lose out if we do, if we don't do this. And second most, with, with due respect to you, Council Chair and, and Director Jamal, this is a council meeting. And until someone asks a question of a director, they just don't get to raise their hand and start talking. We've been on this, on subjects for over an hour, listening to like being in a classroom, okay? Not anybody can just raise their hand and get, and get recognized by the chair. They have to be asked a question. That means anybody in, in, Chief Brogan should be able to raise his hand and just jump right in. That's not the way it's supposed to work. I've been on city council, second only to Robert Costin, as, as far as length goes. And that doesn't, that's not the way it operates. That question has to be directed to that director. He shouldn't just raise his hand and be recognized without a question.
I agree with you, Councilman. In the past, when I have ignored him, he has gotten irate with me, so I'm trying to
Get irate with me?
I try to keep peace.
Okay, so this is getting out of hand.
Next I have Councilman Abdullah.
Council Chair, well, just in comment regards to Council Meskets' comment there. I also understand the council chair's position. It's, it's kind of rude to just not call on somebody while they're raising their hand, so.
They're not a council member.
I, I know, but you have to see the position she's in. You know, I, I do see her difficult situation that she's in. But I just wanted to point out something to our, my fellow council members. And I know this is a contract we signed before, but this is where I'm concerned about giving you an extension of another year. Were you given an extension based on the numbers that were just given by the Chief of Staff? And I didn't have it memorized, but she's saying sixty thousand dollars a year. Is that correct? Mariana? Okay. So if you take sixty thousand dollars a year and you divide that, okay, by two hundred and fifty-four acres, we are leasing this property. We're taking in a profit on this property of two hundred and thirty-six thousand acre. Two hundred and thirty-six thousand acre per year. That's crazy. So I don't see how we would extend this for another year. All I'm asking for, I'm not asking for homes to be built on it. I'm asking for anything else. Let's keep it a golf course. Let's look at other options. And again, with due respect to this particular company, what we are doing right now as a city is not working. You're bringing in sixty thousand dollars and you're gonna extend it for another year? I do rental properties, commercial properties and residential. That's almost, that's almost, I know, but that's almost like leasing out a house. This is crazy.
Find someone, find someone to run a golf course, Dave.
Look.
Get on the phone like I did.
Okay, but if you recall, God rest his soul, at the time, and we didn't agree with the particular ones that came in, I get that. But God rest his soul, when the mayor brought in, if you remember, two or three different ones.
One.
And it
Brought one.
Uh, wait a minute, he brought one and there was another one brought in by Council Chair. It was, he brought one. It was one brought in by Council Chair Melnowski, as I recall, off the top of my head. And I think there was a third. Doesn't matter. The point I'm making with a couple of calls, there was two people in there with no problem. All I'm saying is let's look at our options, whether we put out for RFPs, what we do, let's look at other options. And again, this is with due respect to the current vendor. We gotta bring in more than sixty thousand dollars for two hundred and fifty-four acres. Two hundred and nineteen bucks or whatever, two hundred and thirty-six dollars per acre per year is absolutely non-business good decision-making, in my opinion. Thank you.
Let's take a vote.
Next I have Corporate Counsel Miyaki. Did you still have something to say?
Yes, in response to what Councilman Constan ended up indicating, it actually is a little more complicated in terms of the ownership of the property. Some of this, including the golf courts, golf carts, is linked in with the Wayne County agreement. And you may find yourself, if you do things without really looking at it closely, with a new vendor thinking that they're going to end up having golf carts and not having golf carts and the city having to buy a whole bunch of new golf carts. So that is one of the reasons why we need to end up having sufficient time. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, this time, I think it's time for us to vote on this. Mr. Jamal, you've already spoke. At this time, we're gonna take a vote. Thank you for your speech. Okay. This is Corporation Counsel Miyaki, Warren Valley Golf Course Status Quo Agreement. All of those in favor, say aye.
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 Those opposed?
Nay.
Okay, let's take a roll call vote. Councilman Muscat?
Yes.
Councilman Conston?
Yes.
Councilman Abdul Hawk?
No.
Councilman Abdullah?
No.
Councilman Badum?
No.
Councilman Wenzel?
Yes.
Melodowski Maxwell. Yes, it passes. Next item on the agenda is Fire Chief Brogan, permission to purchase Rogue Equipment with an AFG Grant.
Madam Chair.
Councilman Abdullah?
I move that the Dearborn Heights City Council approved the purchase of fitness equipment from Rogue Fitness in an amount of six thousand four hundred and fifty-nine dollars and forty-one cents. This purchase is being partially funded in an amount of five thousand eight hundred and thirteen thousand forty-seven cents as a part of the prior accepted AFG grant. In addition, authorize the mayor and controller to sign the war upon receipt in the treasurer to issue payment from capital outlay account one zero one dash three three five dash nine eight one period zero 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 is outlined in item nine Q.
Support.
Support by Councilman Badum. Is there any questions? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it. Next we have Library Director McCaffrey, Budget Amendment.
Council Chair.
Councilman Muscat?
I move that the Dearborn Heights City Council approve the amendment of the library budget to create an LSTA Grant Revenue GL Account, reimbursement from LSTA Grant and budgeted for the award amount of twenty-five thousand dollars and create a LSTA Grant Expenditures GL Account and budgeted for the award amount of twenty-five thousand dollars as outlined in nine R. Support.
Support by Councilman Conston. Is there any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it. Next we have Police Chief Myers, BOLO Wrap Project.
Council Chair.
Councilman Muscat?
I move the Dearborn Heights City Council, receive note and file, the attached letter from MMRMA for the approval of the BOLO wrap program. Payment of the wrap slash cap fund is contingent upon the city remaining a member of MMRMA and in compliance with a joint powers agreement. Grant reimbursement is valid for six months from the date of the attached letter as outlined in nine S. Support.
Support by Councilman Abdul Hawk. Is there any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it. Next we have Police Chief Myers, Budget Amendment.
Madam Chair.
Councilman Conston?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I move that the Dearborn Heights City Council approve the budget amendment to increase Police Capital Outlay Account Number one oh one three hundred nine eight one point zero 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 by twenty-seven thousand nine hundred and eighty-two dollars and authorize the controller to amend the budget general ledger account accordingly as outlined in nine T. Support.
Support by Councilman Badum. Is there any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it. Next we have Public Hearing, six P M, December fourteenth.
Madam Chair.
Councilman Wenzel?
I'd like to make a motion that the city council approve and put on the agenda for the December fourteenth, two thousand twenty-one city council meeting, public hearing regarding the twenty twenty-two Parks and Recreation master plan.
Support. Support.
Support by Councilman Badum. Is there any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those, those opposed? The ayes have it. Next we have new business. This is the business license renewal for Randy's Robin Dell Bar located at two five one two two Warren.
Council Chair.
Councilman Badum?
We get the Dearborn Heights City Council renew the business license for Randy's Robin Dell Bar at two five one two two Warren as outlined in thirteen A. Support.
Support by Councilman Abdul Hawk. Is there any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it. Next we have comments from council members.
Council Chair.
I have Councilman Wenzel first.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I have a few things. First of all, I'm very sad to say that we will be losing a great member of our Dearborn Heights family. Elizabeth Sabota Perry will be leaving on the better, bigger and better things, I hope. Maybe help out with lunch monitoring at the school. She's dedicated herself and for many years and she's been very successful guiding our city through a lot of hard times and helping make Dearborn Heights truly a city with a future. And Elizabeth, you're gonna be truly missed. We're gonna miss you a lot. Now, secondly, I sit on a committee of the one hundredth anniversary of the, somebody might have heard, the Warren Valley Golf Course coming up next year. We're, we're having a, we're having an art contest to design a logo that would be used for promotional promotional needs. And the art contest is for any, any person grades K through twelve. There's more information on the city website. If not, there will be in the next couple of days. You submit all your drawings to any of the libraries. And it's got to do with one hundredth anniversary and some nature. There's some more details available and we encourage all of our students in the Dearborn Heights area to participate in this. There's a hundred dollar cash prize first place and fifty dollar for second place, I believe, and twenty-five dollars cash, cash prizes. And your artwork will be used for publicity reasons. It's a really good thing. You might notice, you know, I'm wearing a pink shirt today and that's to, to make aware of Breast Cancer Awareness Month, October. A very serious issue we have in throughout the world. And I know a lot of us has been affected by this. And in this past few weeks, we've seen literally hundreds and hundreds of people volunteering their time going door to door. And it'd be a good idea, like some of my people that offered to help me, I have them volunteering for the Cancer Foundation. If we could just divert some of that energy to a very good cause like the breast cancer awareness and be, make a lot of people happy. And we, because they were, we're spending a lot of money and hours, thousands and thousands of hours doing political things where this is a very serious issue and it, it needs all the help we can get. I'd like to thank all the members of the Dearborn Heights Professional Firefighters union, local union thirteen fifty-five for all they're doing for all of us in the city of Dearborn Heights. I attended with my whole family, the open houses past weekend where they demonstrated a lot of the things the chief Brogan was talking about, really fantastic equipment that they've got. Dearborn Heights firefighters are definitely the best in the state, if not the country. And they are the basis of what we bait our city mouth, city with a future with a great fire department. And I really wanna thank them for everything they do for the city. Thank you.
Yeah, Councilman Badum?
Madam Chair, thank you so much. And just a kind of echo of what Councilman Tom Wenzel said. Elizabeth Sabota Perry is definitely gonna be missed. This is news that I found out today. And the only reason why I knew this is because I saw flowers at City Hall. I said, huh? Why is everybody got flowers in the H R room? So congratulations to Elizabeth. I, I honest to God, we are gonna miss you. I hope that when you run through the neighborhood and you swing by my parents' house, those flowers still look just as nice. That is first and foremost, and congratulations. I know Mariana retired today, she told me. I know Mariana's been with the city for many, many years. So congratulations to Mariana. She also won, I don't know if I'm saying her name right or not, but I hope I am. Oh, okay, I guess I'm not. Mary Ann, Mary Ann, okay. And so congratulations to Mary Ann. Also, I know I've said this in the beginning, while the June flood happened, June twenty-six, I asked for an independent a, a, a study or just seeing what's happening with the floods. I hope that I, and I know I said this back then, that I'm not gonna give up on this flooding issue. There's something internally wrong. I know Ali Deeb has been going above and beyond. I know he's, I've been picking on Ali Deeb. Ali Deeb has been picking on the mayor. The mayor has been just, you know, everybody's kind of working as a team, but I do not want to forget what happened June twenty-sixth. A flood continued to happen in our city. A lot of sewage backup happened. We need to figure out what happened there. So I really want an independent study. So please to the administration, if you can really consider that. Also, the Ekor's Creek, that is not something that we can continue to forget about. I've been knocking doors in the south end, getting to know a lot of the residents. And the biggest issue is the Ekor's Creek. So I've made it my priority that I'm going to continue to question and bring up this awareness because we are not gonna forget what's happening in the Ekor's Creek. I know we have an Ekor's Creek Commission. Thank you to the commission who is putting this, who are working on this. Thank you to the mayor for bringing that forward. Also, this is one that I brought over with our D P W director. I know I've called Mr. Deeb, which hears from me often, maybe two, three times a week. The trees, the tree issue in the city of Dearborn Heights. I'm gonna use the word horrendous. It's terrible. I got residents calling me saying that the trees are falling on people's homes. You got trees falling on people's cars. They're reaching out, leaving, and, and I know we might not have the manpower right now, but we need to come up with a solution. There's a lot of old trees in the city. And I know that there's somewhere, I think Director Conrad said we have somewhere around ninety thousand dollars to spend to cut down really large trees that we can't maintain. I know we're very short staffed. I know I've reached out to many people within the department. I know Ali Deeb spoke with some residents that I've had him speak with. We're able to, you know, fix those solution, but it's not just those residents. I don't want to wait for the resident to call to fix the tree. We see it. We need to maybe go through the entire city, take, document what's happening so that right before the fall or before the springtime, we know what we're properly doing. And then just finally, also to our, our police and fire, I know the fire department just had their open house. Congratulations to our, to Max, Officer, Firefighter Max. Thank you to our police department. I know who are constantly putting their life out on the line. I really appreciate you guys, truly do. Thank you to our Lynn Sinia, who's doing an amazing job there at the clerk's office, constantly getting the updates. I know you guys are working tirelessly. I know it's an election year, so thank you to young ladies at the office. And then to the mayor, I know he recently just hosted a Marine Corps thing at Crestwood. I tell you guys, I looked at this. I did not expect this. There was several students in there from Crestwood and from different high schools. Even some of the fire and police chiefs that were there as well. I believe Police Mark Myers and Chief Rogan was also there. I don't think Chief Rogan was able for the heat, though. I think he was holding off. And then I also asked the mayor to, to race. He gave me some excuse and I said, don't worry about it. It's all right. I'll race you again. I'm just joking. With that, I'm gonna leave us with just a thank you to Councilman Abdullah. Always right before the city council meeting, gives me a call. I know I'm the, you know, the young one on here, always checks up. Hey, what can I help you? Do you have any questions? Since being on the council for the last nine months, I, honest to God, I appreciate your leadership. You, you and I, I don't know if it's just to me or to everybody else, but he's definitely always looking out for me. So But he's definitely always looking out for me. So Councilman Abdullah, kudos to you. Thank you for everything. Thank you for your mentorship. Have less Elizabeth Sabota Perry. Have a great day.
Thank you. Next, I have Councilman Muscat.
Thank you, Council Chair. Congratulations, Ms. Perry, Zoe Perry. Long, we're gonna miss you. I'm gonna miss you. I like stopping in and speaking with you and, and, and your staff both, okay? But I want to thank Councilman Mo Baydun for the tree issue. Our trees, you know, we were called the city of trees. These trees are not trees anymore. After, after they were trimmed years ago by, by Edison Or D T E, they look like hell. We've got trees now that, that are sprouting from the, from the base And they look like bushes and not trees anymore. We've let these, you know, for the last twenty years, twenty five years, We've let this city run down, period. And, and that's only blame, the only blame that could be put on is The elected officials, myself included, for letting this get this far. I've been away from city council recuperating, but that didn't mean I wasn't doing my job. I was sending emails. I was contacting directors, especially Mr. Deep and Mr. Conrad And other council people. And I assure you that I was on the spot Trying to help all the residents and the flooding and the trash pickup, which I wish I could do more. I really truly wish I could do more. So that is all I have to say. And again, I want to Say that Council Chair, I really meant what I said about, you know, People raising their hands shouldn't just get to be able to talk. This is a city council meeting. And as city council people, we need to do our due diligence before the council and ask questions before. We went round and round and round for almost an hour on two or three subjects. And that was it. And after it was said and done, everything got voted in. So that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Next, I have Councilman Coniston.
Thank you, Madam Chair. We'll miss you, Elizabeth Perry and Mariana Delecta. I think you're irreplaceable, but you've done a great job for the city. I'm sure everyone, including myself, really appreciates it. The fire department had their open house and I saw a lot of younger children there. It was great. It was refreshing. And talked to the firefighters and we had the Crestwood Honor Society students passing out cider and donuts. It was a very great event. I'm glad the council is continuing to get down to business. We talk about issues that involve lots, lots, lots of money. And we've got a lot of important issues in business to discuss. I, for one, always enjoy hearing from and talking with my friend, Compliance Director Hassan Jamal. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, I have Councilman Abella.
Thank you, Council Chair. First of all, I want to thank Elizabeth Sabota Perry for all her services. One of the best that we've had at City Hall ever. I made a Hall of Famer as far as City Hall Employees. And I wish we could replicate her twenty times over, because I'd bring at least one of them to my office. I was, when I first found out, I was honestly a little upset, only upset for us selfishly, because she did such a great job. But honestly, when I found out where she's going to a charitable organization for a good cause, I had even more respect for her. So I wish her nothing but the best in her next venture. And I, as I'm sure she's gonna do a great job like she did with our city. So thank you for all your services. Because one thing she always brought to the table is passion. And I love people with passion. She always brought a lot of passion and skill set to the table. So love you for that. Thank you. Wish you and your family the best. And second and main thing I, I want to discuss is unfortunately, Well, first of all, I could not be at the last council meeting because unfortunately I had contacted COVID that same morning. And thank God, I'm okay. I had no problems. Thank God. And tested again, tested negative. Thank God. But with that being the case, I could not be at an event that the mayor put on for the Ekor's Creek. And with that being the case, unfortunately, I missed it. But maybe if he could give us at least just a few seconds update As far as what was discussed at that particular meeting, all the different options that himself and Engineer Ali Deep Have put together for our city on the Ekor's Creek. And I'd like to commend them and all of our council members And our council chair for just keeping this on the table, because this Ekor's Creek situation should not go away. And please, I beg all of you guys, myself included, let's not keep this thing just a election year Campaign issue and keep this a continuous issue until it's finally solved for their residents. Thank you.
Thank you.
So Mr. Mayor, can you give us, you or Ali Deep, maybe at least briefly, what options you have on the table that you're working on?
Go ahead, Mayor.
Okay, so the, the forum we had at the church, it was actually very successful. We had a lot of residents actually came in, voiced their opinion. I'm sure you've seen it on Fox News, then even though the Fox News was gonna be there. But we discussed the different, with pretty much at the forum, we discussed a lot of issues, you know, that with the city. So I put it, it was a state of the city, you know, address. Plus, you know, the Ekor's Creek topic, you know, is being one. And also the Rouge, you know, river On the other end of town, you know, also has issues. And we had an outing on Sunday at the, at Warren Valley Golf Course. You know, and I noticed some of the things that, you know, some of the residents on the Ekor's Creek, you know, had with logs, you know, jam. And Mr. Mr. Deep actually mentioned that at the meeting. So we have a huge logs, you know, you know, dead wood, and there's other debris on the Ekor's. And I've noticed the same thing on the Rouge River. So this actually goes through the golf course. And there's one area that I would say that probably like fifteen, maybe twenty percent water was flowing to that, To that river or to that creek in that particular area because of log jams. Same thing on the Ekor's Creek. So I know Mr. Deep and myself, at separate times, we went to some areas on the Ekor's Creek. We talked about the logs in that creek. We talked about also the, there's a lot of sediment in In the creek, you know, where the, the actual drain comes in from the streets into, into that creek itself. So it's already half, sometimes it's more than have, you know, fall with sediment. So a lot of water is not going through that creek. And we also talked about, we had, I, I mentioned that a few times, we're meeting with Wayne County And also the state Congressman Rashida Clay was at the meeting as well. And she is really gung ho about trying to accelerate the work on the Ekor's Creek. And she's talking about separate funding, you know, one for that cleanup and also the second one Trying to do more with the creek, you know, try to open it up, you know, maybe widen it, deepen it. And we also talked about the funding that we're trying to get through FEMA, purchasing more homes off the Ekor's Creek. And the reason why we're accelerating that process as well. And the reason why is those homes, when we purchase them, we gotta demolish those homes. And we're thinking about putting retention detention basin around the, along the creek, you know, where the homes Being demolished. So that be water would actually can be retained in that area. And also rain garden. I don't know if you remember, we talked several years ago, when the first few homes were demolished under the first grant. I know some of the residents, I think probably the residents actually online right now that brought that up, That there was a grant that you can actually have rain garden in that area. But that was never done. So this is something we're looking at as well. So we have a lot of options. Also, we had a meeting with Wayne County just a few days ago, and we're gonna follow up on this Friday. We have another meeting with Wayne County. They're trying to organize a cleanup at the Ekor's Creek. So they're gonna get a contractor. So it's not gonna be a full scale, but we're gonna do You know, one day cleanup at the Ekor's Creek. They're gonna try to get these claws. And we agreed to partner with, with that county from the city, city side, Trying to remove debris and also, you know, use our trucks as well to haul some of that garbage that we're gonna pull out of the creek. And that's gonna be on Saturday, the twenty third. So they do have a contractor that is gonna be at the creek. So we're gonna concentrate on, you know, two areas right now, behind O W Best And also behind the Richard A. Young, but for, you know, for, for the Saturday, the twenty third. However, we are gonna meet, we're gonna see how successful that event is. And we're gonna go, you know, revisit, you know, the cleanup, maybe at another location. So myself, Mr. Deep, Mr. Conrad, and we, we, we met and separately. And we're gonna see what resources we're gonna use, you know, maybe at the next, you know, at this cleanup And possibly at second cleanup that we're gonna, we're gonna do. And we don't know when that's at Or when that date will be. But we will know more after the twenty third cleanup. And I'll keep the council and the residents informed.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Mayor, I have you on the list. Did you want to continue talking about why you raised your, since I have you unmuted?
Okay, well, I want, I was wondering if other council members want to talk before I talk.
No, that's fine. You, you're unmuted already. So since there's such a delay, go ahead.
Okay. Well, I mean, also Elizabeth, you know, our director Elizabeth Perry, That was like, I, like I told you, I'm gonna tell the council and all the residents the same thing. When she gave me the news that she was gonna resign, I told her it was not a punch in the face. It was like a pick in the face. Because she's an amazing, amazing director. She's been, I mean, she's been amazing, you know, when we did the audit, You know, she's been going way and above what a director, you know, H R director will do. And she's helped us through the budget. She's helped us through a lot of issues that we've had, you know, in the city. And I, I, I just can't say enough, you know, how, you know, how sad I am to see her leave. You know, I, I tried everything. I might try one more thing. I might, when she drives off, I might just throw myself in front of her vehicle. But she's, she's amazing, you know, and Marion also, you know, congratulate, I want to congratulate her. She's been amazing also. She's, she's retiring. You know, she had, you know, she has other thing, plans, you know, but you know, they're both Committed to the city and they said they'll come here whenever we need it. So I thank both of them for that, giving us the option And also what, willing to work with us, you know, after they're gone. So I know where Elizabeth lives and now I know where Marion lives. So we'll definitely be calling on both of them. I had one of the residents send me an email, the officer Was actually performed CPR. His name is Officer Carl. So we, I want to commend him for going way and above the call of duty. There was an issue with somebody needed CPR. And he kept trying really, really hard, you know, what, you know, to revive him, You know, to safety and, you know, just he wouldn't give up on, on, on the person. So I want to commend them, Officer Carl's amazing, great work. Lot of residents that were watching this, they, they send their, you know, their thanks to, to him. Also, as mentioned earlier, you know, this month, thank you. This month is, you know, Breast Cancer Awareness Month, you know, me, you know, losing, you know, very close family member to that. You know, just make sure we recognize this month as Breast Cancer Awareness Month. Also, the, the fire department, I know somebody mentioned already, I don't want to repeat, But it was a great event in the open house. We had a lot of residents come in, a lot of children that came in. It was amazing. You know, they put on a great show for the kids and also the parents. And the Marine Corps Challenge, yes, they were real Marines. So, you know, a few days ago, we had the Marine Corps Challenge. And the fire department and two police, you know, the chief and Sergeant Bazey also attended from the police department. They took on the challenge and they got second place. So that was amazing. Hey, hey, you, I would, I would talk, Councilman Baydun, you backed out. You pretended you didn't have your running shoes, so. But thank you for all who participated. Thank you for all who put this thing together, you know, from Crestwood. You know, Elite Sport was, was a main sponsor for the event. You know, they were sponsored from last year. And next event's gonna be September. And we have about, you know, ten to fifteen teams that are interested in it. So again, thank you for all who, who participated and who contributed to it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Councilman Abdul Hawk.
Thank you, Madam Chair. There isn't much to say after all this. Anyway, I want to wish the ones who are retired, Elizabeth and Mary, the best of luck. We will miss you. You were a great asset in the city. And I wish you change your mind and you stay with us. So good luck to you, wherever you are, you are going. And I want to extend my condolences to Director Hashim for the loss of his nephew. And that was a very sad loss. And I hope that the family Will be together to pass through this hard time. Now, we had a study session about the Civil Service Commission. And I asked the question to Commissioner Scott, If fifteen dollars minimum wage an hour is enough to bring people to work for the city? And the answer was clear cut that it is not. And we need, I believe, we still have people who are working in the city Probably under fifteen dollars an hour. I asked the administration, please, to review the salaries however you can And make sure that we are competitive with other cities. McDonald is offering fifteen dollars an hour, Target offering more than fifteen dollars an hour. I hope we be fair to our employees and we adjust, you know, their salaries. Second thing, it was a great experience to see Act Seventy Eight Commission and the Civil Service Commission in front of the city council, Which give the council members great opportunity to learn about what they do And gives the residents actually a great opportunity to learn about what those commissions are about And why they, they get appointed and what they accomplish. And what's the benefit the city gets from those appointments. So I asked if those commissions can voluntarily contact either myself Or the chairperson and arrange for fifteen or maybe thirty minutes Every meeting before, you know, the meeting To basically explain to us what they do, what's their accomplishment, what's their duties And what they bring to the city of benefit, you know, because of their jobs. And the last thing, we have fought so hard for years, most of us on the city council To do the forensic audit of the finance of the city. And I did ask To bring the auditors thirty days ago in front of us to give us at least preliminary Report about what they have done and what they found. And tonight, I would like, since we have not seen anything, I like to make a motion To bring the auditors in front of the city council next city council meeting on the twenty sixth of October.
I support that.
Thank you.
Okay. The mayor's got a response, I do believe.
Actually, you don't need to put a motion. They, I got an email from them the other day. They want to come to stop me know what day and for an hour. So if you want to do for the next council meeting, you know, you guys let us know and we'll bring them at the next council meeting.
Yeah, I agree with that. I think we all agree.
I was draw my motion, they come in on the, the twenty sixth. And thank you, everybody.
Thank you. Next, I have Madam Clerk.
Sorry about that. I do want to echo everything that you all said about our H R Director, Elizabeth Sabota Perry. That's one first-class act lady. We couldn't get anything better than, than Elizabeth and Marion. Not only is she an awesome director, she's become all of our friends. And that's, I think, the part that we're gonna miss. So Elizabeth, good luck. This is you have to do for your family and we wish you all the luck. Now back onto business. We have a couple important dates. October eighteenth Is the last day for those that are not registered to vote, to register in any manner other than in person with Here at City Hall with the local clerk for the November second, twenty one election. Okay, we are asking if anyone has requested a ballot and has not received that ballot To please contact our office at seven nine one To please contact our office at seven nine one three four three zero and we can remedy, remedy that. We can spoil the ballot and issue a new one if it didn't come in the mail. Um, just so that, uh, all registered voters know, or anybody else that wants to look, we do have sap, sample ballots. On our, our election page on the city's website, as well as our bulletin board here at City Hall. Um, if you have received an absentee ballot. Um, please return that either by the US mail. We also have three drop boxes, one at the JFK library that's open twenty-four seven. One at the end of the walkway coming up to City Hall. And one, we have the night deposit box to the right of the City Hall door. Uh, you can also are welcome to come into City Hall if you wanna drop it right in the slot in our, on our counter. Um, during regular business hours, Monday through Thursday from eight to twelve in one to five. It's been a long day. Um, and then, um, another thing is for election business only. The clerk's office will be open on Friday, October twenty-ninth from nine to four. And, um, on Saturday, October thirtieth from eight to four. So you're welcome to come in for election business only. And just in case you're looking for some, something to do on November second, we still have openings for election workers. And you get paid to come and, and join our team, okay? It's a hundred and fifty-five dollars for the day. Uh, we do have a mandatory computer training that would. Um, give you another thirty dollars and we have computer, computer training if anybody's interested for twenty. One last reminder to the candidates that are running, um, I had the opportunity, um, the ordinance director and myself. Um, spoke about this, I think it was yesterday, and I know many of you all know that the ordinance department is short on staff. Uh, but for the candidates, please, please, please don't put your signs on City Eastman. Which is the area between the sidewalk and the street. Um, because it's against our city ordinance. I can say that coming out of my subdivision at one business, in addition to the two signs that are there for the business. On the city easements, there's twelve signs. And, um, it's really an obstruction when you try to, um, turn left out of there. So I appreciate it. I know it's probably not the candidates, but if they could, um. Uh, spread the news to their team, that would help the ordinance department. And help, um, our office getting the numerous phone calls with complaints. Thank you, Elizabeth. Thank you, and I'm, we wish you the best.
Yeah, also too, I'd like to wish Elizabeth and all the others from that department that are leaving, uh, it's a sad day that everybody. For whatever personal reasons have decided to leave the HR department, but I wish you all good luck in your future. Um, also too, I've got a lot of questions lately about our hybrid meetings. Um, I've been contacted by residents who do not have the technology to watch our meetings on Zoom. And I feel for them. I know a lot of the older people don't have internet. They got flip phones even still. And they feel they are being excluded from our meetings because, you know, the city council, they felt should be meeting publicly. So I reached out to, um, Bob Ankrapp and he sent me the following email. Um, as a follow-up to our earlier conversations regarding the live streaming, streaming of future city council meetings. Which would allow us to have it in-person and live streaming and have interaction at home. Um, he has been instructed by Mayor Bazey that neither Angela or, uh, him pursue any. Technological plans or options until a specific long-term meeting, location or room is located and confirmed. Once an appropriate meeting facility is located and confirmed. They will start the process of assessing the needs in order to conduct live streaming. Um, I guess my question is, Mayor Bazey, since you are the keeper of the buildings. I'm gonna direct you to please find us a permanent place to have our city council meetings. At, until the council chambers are done. I was there last week and the chambers is totally gutted. It's been gutted since the first week in August. So we need to be provided with a location to have our meetings at, um, because we don't have control over the, uh, over the different. Buildings as you do. So I'm gonna ask you, please help us on that. Go ahead.
Well, as we stated to you in the past, you know, we need a permanent location. We don't wanna spend money. To have, uh, to go retrofit whatever building or whatever room to come back and change it. So the council room, if you would have asked before, I would have told you the same thing, you know, that we had, you know, multiple walkthrough. You know, we are proceeding with, uh, with the changes of the council room, uh, or studio B. So we have, uh, we had a walkthrough just, uh, about a little over a week, two weeks ago. Uh, we picked the carpeting, we picked, you know, the paneling and everything. So we got another walkthrough, you know, this week. And, uh, with the, with, uh, the shortage of everything, you know, in this world, we're having issues getting a lot of. Um, a lot of equipment, you know, with, uh, because of COVID. So we are trying really hard to get that room up and running. So we do have, uh. We've had several meetings and we've had, you know, a whole team just about a week and a half ago with, uh. Uh, a lot of people from the administration were there just to look at, see what, uh, what the room is gonna look like.
Right, cuz I know I, we, I know the room was tore apart the first week in August and we had hoped that there would have been some progress. But, and since you are the keeper of the buildings, can you please find us a place where we can locate? Um, Mr. Ankrapp did tell me all he needs is a place that he can set it up and leave it until we go back to council chambers. We're unable to do that at Riverside because they have kids in there during the day and they take all of our equipment down at the end of the meeting. So I don't know if there's maybe a place at Eaton or at Berwin. That we could actually set up and leave it where it wouldn't be disturbed. And then we could go ahead and have our hybrid meetings that some of the people are asking for. And still allow the people without technology to attend the meetings.
Well, you tell us where you wanna have the meeting and, you know, we'll, we'll retrofit it for you. I mean, you know, you know.
Well, no, you're the keeper of the buildings. I can't just go there. I was able to go to the school.
You wanna do what, what the council, what fits the council. I mean, you're the council chair.
Well.
Council room, you know, council meetings are the council's responsibility, but you tell me what. What room you wanna do it in and I'll make it happen.
Um, I, well, let's talk to, um, Director Lawrence Al, cuz I'm thinking maybe Berwin. Might be the logical place. Um, but like I said, I have no authority over that building. You do. I was able to do the school because the school is a different entity from the city. But unfortunately, we can't leave the equipment set up. So. If it's gonna be a long-term thing with all the supplies and stuff as far as the council room goes, let's work on this and see if we can find a place and let me know. So like I said, that's. You're the, you have the final say. I can't say anything. Okay, this time we have Director, Library Director McCaffrey. This is public announcements. Go ahead. Yep, there it is.
Oh, hello, Council Chair and Mayor. First off, just wanted to thank everyone for assisting our open houses a few weeks ago. Um, despite a power outage at Carolyn County, we were able to divert some of the programs to JFK. And had, uh, pretty solid attendance, thanks to DPW for support. Uh, the police department and the fire department for, uh, their donations. Uh, Senator Betty Jean Alexander for sponsoring the Wayne State Mobile Health Clinic. Uh, Treasurer Lisa Hicks-Plight and then Mayor Bilbazzi for their efforts. Also, uh, thanks to Applebee's, Olga's Kitchen, Al Amir, Silks of Heaven, Mango Languages. Overdrive, uh, Hoopla, Hamido, Abasha Subs, Zaglo Subs and Burgers. And Haneed House for, uh, their donations. Uh, in that vein, we have a similar event coming up on October thirtieth from six to, six to ten PM. At Carolyn County Library, we will be doing a trunk or treat haunted mini golf event. So you'll be able to play putt-putt golf in the library with, uh, some court, with, uh, some clubs and some, uh, foam balls, so they don't damage anything in there. Uh, we will have two nine-hole courses at CK, raffle prizes, a book giveaway. Uh, treats and more for everyone. Uh, the library will be taking donations for Goodfellows for the event. Uh, so have fun and make sure no child gets left behind. Uh, if you want to sponsor a trunk or donate, uh, please leave a message, uh, via Facebook or call three one three seven nine one. Uh, three eight oh four or three eight one six, uh, and leave a callback number and we will return your call. Um, and I also wanted to, uh, wish a goodbye, uh, to someone I'd worked with for fifteen years. Um, and, uh, you know, I got to rely on a lot and, um, anyway, I'll miss you. And, um, I'm very excited for it. So, see you later. Uh, and that's all for now. Uh, one, one more thing. If you ever decide to be a shover, uh, that offer's still open or your entire office, it's still, it's still there. I know that you wanted to do that day one, so it's still there if you wanna do it. Uh, so that's all for now. Thanks for your time and see you all at the library soon.
Thank you. Next, we have Director Dishroom.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Am I unmuted now?
Yes, you are.
Thank you, thank you so much. I just wanted to, uh, have a few, uh, quick reminders, uh, to the residents and businesses alike. And I had a few other things I wanted to mention real briefly. I just wanted to remind, um, everybody echoing the, uh, city clerk sentiments that signs may not be placed between the curb and sidewalk. It does not matter what kind of sign it is. It's not supposed to be there at all. Um, also, um, everybody, please remember to keep your grass cut below six inches. And when you're doing grass cutting and fall cleanup, do not blow leaves or grass into the street. Um, I appreciate that. We've gotten calls about that already, so, um. Ordinance is trying to get caught up on our complaints. Uh, we're actually offering overtime to try to get caught up still. Uh, thanks to, to Mayor Bazey, uh, for allowing that. Uh, if you have any questions or concerns, you can call the ordinance department at three one three seven nine one three four nine seven. Um, also, I'd like to thank, uh, Mr. Jamal and Director Hashim for their continued support. And also, uh, Mayor Bazey for offering overtime for our department in order to try to get caught up. Also, I'd like to thank Councilman Baydun and Councilman Muscat, uh, for their continued support. I've heard from Councilman Muscat recently, um, he's, he's still working diligently in the background supporting our department. And, uh, last but not least, I would like to thank, um, Elizabeth Sabota Perry for her, um, help. Uh, since I've taken over, um, as Director of Ordinance. Um, she was very instrumental, obviously, in helping me get my fourth full-time person hired in short, very short order. Uh, somebody that I needed desperately, uh, because of all the staffing issues the department has had. I'd also like to thank, uh, Marion and I wish both of them nothing but the best. They're, they're, they're. Grade A, Class A people. And, uh, I'd like to extend them a job offer as well. We need people in the ordinance. I see Liz laughing right now. Same thing with Marion. Um, we have shirts and keys. And also, uh, before I forget, I'd like to express my condolences publicly to, uh, Director Hashim. For the loss of his family member. I spoke to him today. Uh, my condolences to you and your family, prayers. Um, and that's it. Uh, thank you very much, Madam Chair. Everybody have a good night.
Thank you. Director Hashim, go ahead, please.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Good evening, Mayor Bazey. Good evening, uh, council members. Just wanna say a quick reminder, first of all, that we do have the HPP still going on. And with the mayor's advice, we did reach out to Wayne County. Wayne County do have a program. That's similar to our program. We have put that site on, we had put the link on our site, on our website. Under Community and Economic Development. So anybody's in need of any help, we, they can reach out to us at. Three one three seven nine one three five zero zero. Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, everyone. I also wanna extend my best wishes to Elizabeth. I mean, she will be dearly missed. Thank you for all your services and all the help and all the things that you've done in the last five years that I've been here. Thank you again and have a good night, everyone. Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Is there any more public announcements? Or comes our community announcements? Okay, next we go to public announcements. The limit is three minutes. Go ahead, Leslie Winless.
Hey, Council Chair Denise, I had raised my hand under, um, the community announcement.
I'm sorry.
Because I wasn't sure, um, if the stuff that Latoya emailed you about, about for the D, um. For the Culture Commission, which, which part I'm supposed to bring it up on.
Oh, yeah, that would be the part. And I am sorry, I apologize on that one.
No, that's okay. Um, we just need, um, some clarification as to what. Um, I guess the city council and the administration. Believes this commission is supposed to do. Um, when I first was brought on to the commission, um. And everything we set to do, um, I made it very clear that DEI is not something I take lightly. This is, I've dedicated my entire career to it. Um, my life is DEI work. And that's why I wanted to join, um, the commission. All of the hurdles we've been through over the last year, um. To me, appear that the city wants to have an illusion of inclusion. Um, because when it's time for us to do the actual work, all we get is, um, barriers. And this last barrier has us at the point where at least four of us as residents do not even wanna do this anymore. Um, when Mayor Puleco was alive, God rest his soul, he attended every single one of our meetings. Um, so did Chrissy Lazlo. And when she could not make it, she listened to the recordings. Um, she wrote our minutes for us. They were just very, very engaged with this commission. And there was no disconnect between the, um, commission or, um, the city. Uh, no one from the city officially attends our meetings. Um, and then when we come up with these great plans about what we wanna do for DEI, for the city of Dearborn Heights. Um, based on what the residents are telling us that they want. Um, we do it in a public format and then we go into planning. And then it's time for us to put the flyer out or it's time for us to do the event and we get all these red flags from administration. My issue is that if you know that this is the new commission and you know you're gonna have a problem with it. What seems like almost everything we do, why are you not attending the meetings? Why would you, why are you waiting? Until we're about to do an event to bring up concerns. Um, the event that we're supposed to do on Monday. Is a diversity, equity and inclusion forum, which is asking questions of those who are running for public office. About diversity, equity and inclusion. That is what the residents want. I am one of those residents. Um, we fielded at least fifty questions from residents about this and this is something they wanna see. We talked about it publicly at our last, um, commission meeting. We voted unanimously. To have this forum, um, just to be contacted by the administration saying that we can't do it. And there's no, nothing in writing, um, just a phone call, no follow-up, no. We, we don't know exactly why we can't do this. It seems to fall exactly in what the scope of this commission is for. And I'm sorry, I'm not gonna be your token black girl just so you can say you have one on the commission. So I would like clarity today and now on what exactly is this commission and what is the goal the city sees. Um, the commission doing things going forward.
Hello?
So Leslie, and, uh, the one, uh, concern that you had. Actually, I mean, I did talk to, uh, our city attorney and just wanted to make sure. I don't know if you, you want him to address that issue that, uh, you brought up with, uh, you know, partnering with, uh, the forum. We just don't want, you know, just like one person to come out and say, you know, they oppose, you know, something that was brought up. And say that was city-sponsored event. You know, that was the, the concern.
Yeah, I understand that concern, but I, I'm concerned with the fact you don't have this concern for anything else. Um, we have done autism baskets and people could have sued the city for, um, breach of contract. We have done, um, we wanted to do a drive-up movie theater. That was approved. A kid could have got ran over. Um, we did a Juneteenth event. Someone could have fell at the park. Like, at what, at what point are the legal, um, questions in place? And at what point are we supposed to consult the, the lawyer? We have asked repeatedly for training. The last answer we got was because of the flood, which happened in June. Um and we still don't have training. And we still don't have anyone from the administration attending the meeting. This is beyond frustrating and disappointing um as somebody who's really engaged in the city.
Yeah, this, we probably have to uh revisit that one with, because I, with the charter that was written way before my time, you know, with this commission. So we have to uh discuss with legal, see what what things we can and cannot do. Again, this this commission was created, you know, several years ago. So this is something we probably have to visit, you know, with, you know, everything going on and, you know, that we 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 would, we would look into this one for sure. But let me talk to our attorney. There's been so much, so much things going on with the city. So I know this is something we need to look at. So just give us a little bit of time and I will discuss this with our attorney.
With all due respect, we don't have time and that is why I'm here at this forum. Our event is scheduled for next Monday. We have residents that are waiting to get answers to their questions. And we are told a few days before the event is supposed to go up, and this is not a one-time thing. This also happened with our Juneteenth event, which was almost canceled for the same stuff. Um we need to know why we can't move forward with a forum where we're asking DEI questions to potential candidates. And that is what our commission is for. I I don't understand why that doesn't fall in the in the preview of this commission.
Uh again, I need, I need to check, you know, I can check and give give you a call back tomorrow. If you want a uh a letter from the attorney, I will. I will direct our attorney to send you a letter tomorrow.
No, I I don't want a letter from the attorney. I want to understand why we can't do an event that falls under the commission. Every other event we done has had the same thing where someone could have sued the city. Do you not, are you not gonna do a trunk-or-treat indoor at the library because someone could catch COVID while they're sharing golf clubs? Like, I don't understand why it's only specifically when there's this commission doing DEI work. That there are legal ramifications that you need to bring up.
Council Chair, Mr. Miyake wants to answer that question.
Hi, Mr. Corporate Council Miyaki.
Uh yes, Ms. Winless, um basically what it comes down to is it's not legal ramifications in terms of liability or exposure. And I don't think that I've necessarily mentioned anything like that in the past. It's really a matter of it being a candidate forum. And under state law, in order for a candidate forum to be done, it has to be done with. Everyone being able to have an appropriate ability to participate. So when I discussed this with Mayor, I said, well, do we know? Or can we verify that everything has been done so that it's kind of like the League of Women Voters types of forums that they used to do? And he did not know what the, what, how how this was being uh conducted. At least that was my understanding. If I'm, if I'm wrong, Mayor, please correct me. Um so I said, we're in a position where we cannot vouch for that. That's one of the reasons why we can't have electioneering take place at city council meetings or events. Because state law prevents us from basically doing things to assist uh particular candidates. We can only do something that's like an objective candidate forum where everyone has a right to participate. So that was the basis for my advice. I don't know if that necessarily answers your question, but that was the basis for my advice.
Um no, I I appreciate that, uh Mr. Uh Miyaki. What I um wanna know now is, when you asked Mayor um Bazey that. Why did um anyone not reach out to any commission member? We could have easily provided you proof. That we contacted every single um candidate and we gave them an equal opportunity um to participate. One thing I'd like to point out is that I do sit on the League of Women Voters and I have had a firsthand. Um knowledge as well as assist with the forum that the mayor um and city council chair just did. As well as every city council person who is running. Um I was on that call. I created those questions. I assisted with every single part of that. So I don't know why anybody would question whether or not it was done when the simple thing is to pick up the phone and ask me. Um if that was the concern, why not ask me whether it was done and allow me to show you proof before you basically just tell us no? And that we can't do something that's already about to happen?
Are you asking me that? Are you asking the mayor that? Or just?
No, I think you did your job, ma- um, Mr. Miyaki. I think you let the mayor know, hey, um are the concern would be that every person would have to have a fair right to attend. My question is now to the administration, um because this was first brought up in July. So if you're watching our uh meetings like you're supposed to be, if you're listening to our uh reading our minutes like you're supposed to be. Um then this could, this concern could have been brought up three months ago. So my question is, why didn't you come back to me and ask me the question that Mr. Miyaki posed? Which is whether or not each candidate had a fair opportunity to attend this forum? And allow me to show you that proof.
Uh again, I I apologize if I didn't get back with you. There's a lot of stuff going on. I'm sure you just seen, you know, with uh a lot, a lot of things I'm doing here. And, you know, you know, I was, I was, you know, I was gonna call, give you a buzz today, but, you know, again, you know, a lot of stuff has been popping up. So I apologize for that. But uh again, you know, that's, that's why, I mean, I contacted Mr. Miyaki and I guess there was a disconnect. I should have, uh, you know, uh, you know, I guess. Reply to you by email, at least then you have something documented through email.
Okay, well, I would appreciate someone following up with us in writing and actually taking the time to attend our meetings going forward. So that this will not keep happening and wasting everyone's time on a city council call. Um and I would appreciate it if we're allowed to go on with our forum. We have, most of our candidates have already confirmed that they will be in attendance and everything is already set up. We've also partnered with the NAACP and I think that it sends a a negative message to the NAACP. And I also think it makes us look dysfunctional and unorganized, which we clearly are, but I don't think it publicly needs to be known that we are. That's it for um the Culture Commission. Thank you.
Council Chair, Madam Chair. Council Chair.
Oh, okay. Um, Mr. Blackburn?
Okay, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, um this goes back to the original Seahaw Roofing Project that was approved last year. Um and I don't know the answer to this question. That's why I'm asking. Um usually in the past, uh bid bonds are refunded back to the unsuccessful bidders. And the company that won that bid that we never did, was their bid bond ever returned? Are we still hanging on to the money? And if so, can we do what we can to return that company's uh bid bond money?
Who are you directing it towards?
Um anybody, because usually um bid bonds are returned. It's got to go back in front of them. So um I don't know, the the administration probably be able to uh find out the answer of the bid bond was returned to that company and what we gotta do to.
Okay, I've got um the controller. He's got his hand up. Let's let him answer it.
Uh that's taking care of an R office, so I can check with uh Matthew who handles that. Um if it's possible to shoot an email either to me or to Matthew Paul. Uh and uh we can respond to you if, you know, any information, like give us the name of the bidder and all that, so we know who to respond about. And and we should be able to give you an answer on if there's a delay. Why does a delay? You know, so it shouldn't be too tough to answer that.
Okay, great, then.
Thank you. All right, um. Okay, is there any more community announcements? This is announcements in the community such as commissions or the library? Any more community announcements?
Council Chair.
Jamal.
Just uh, uh good afternoon. Just to uh make a announcement. To inform the public, the council and. Uh all the administration, I think they know that we, the administration. Again, with the support of the resolution of the flood in general, we applied to the State of Michigan. FEMA program under the Michigan State Police. Uh we did apply for or put an intent to apply later on for about twenty-eight million dollars. That includes uh five different infrastructure. Uh there were actually capital planning investment for the future. According to uh the study done by our uh professional engineer, Mr. Deep. I respect his experience. Mr. Deep came from a large organization. He was the chief engineering officer for the eighth, I think, I think, I believe, the eighth, eighth number of airports in the country. The uh Detroit Metro Airport. With his experience, we, we reviewed together uh differently with the approval of the mayor. And our other uh finance team, including uh Chief of Staff Mariana Hernandez. And including Liz, I mean, the treasurer and the controller. We submit that and we coordinate with the county and the county uh will be discussing with us later on. If they can be participating, what's the degree of participation with the twenty-five percent match? Uh that's a very good, we did actually get an extension for the expired FEMA, one point four million dollars. That the residue of that back from two thousand sixteen. We are in the process. We are glad to report to you that two grants. Will be reported as successful grant by Michigan Police Agency to FEMA in the futures. And we are working with them also and trying to find another way or alternative. To recover some of the trash that caused by uh the latest flood. With that, thank you.
Okay, all right. Next, um Councilman Wenzel, are you doing a public announcement or are you commenting as a um resident?
Um, as a resident.
Okay, and and before we go ahead, Madam Clerk, I need you to read the um criteria to comment as, as um a resident.
A public comment at city council meetings, a member of the public who violates these rules or any other applicable rules established by the council. May be directed by the council chair to comply with the rules. If the member of the public continues to violate the rules, the council chair may direct him or her to end his or her comments. A member of the public shall comply with the council chair's orders. A member of the public shall not be excluded from a meeting otherwise open to the public except for a breach of peace actually committed at the meeting. Members of the public shall have a reasonable opportunity to be heard in any regular meeting of the council. Or at any special meeting of the council on matters within the council's jurisdiction. Members of the public may address the council under the rules established by the council, including this policy. Members of the public shall not comment in general during the meeting. Or participate in a meeting unless specifically permitted to do so by council. Although the scope of things that may be spoken under comments is extremely broad. A person's speech and actions while addressing the council during the comment section of the public comment are not without limits. In addition to any other applicable legal requirements, a person shall not engage in profane, obscene or criminal speech or actions while addressing the council. During the comment section of the public comment. Moreover, a person shall not commit a breach of peace while addressing the council during the comment section. The procedure for addressing the council during the comment section of public comment shall be as follows. Any member of the public who wants to address the council shall begin doing so by standing his or her name. The street he or she lives on and the municipality in which he or she resides. He or she shall have up to three minutes to address the council.
Okay, thank you. First, we have Councilman Wenzel commenting as a resident. Go ahead, please.
Never mind. No, it's good. Um I, this first one, I should have been brought up as a commission. Uh I'm, I've got the honor to sit on the Van Born. Corridor uh overlay commission and there's a very exciting things happening behind the scenes. And uh we're working on our ordinance uh in cooperation with the city of Taylor and it's, we've got a. A draft all set and it's gonna be going for for our planning commission very soon. Thanks to Ali Deep and uh Mayor Bazey and uh all the people from Taylor. Um we're actually looking for some uh, we're gonna have a like an event coming up soon. But we want to encourage people to start businesses on Van Born Road, perhaps maybe some council members that have a business on open satellite uh real estate. I mean, satellite business on Van Born Road. There's plenty of spaces for that. And uh also, I I'd like to say that um as a resident, I I like, I like to listen to Director Jamal. He's very knowledgeable. He knows a lot about everything and it's, 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 it's a pleasure to know that someone is so passionate about their position. And I really want to thank all the people in the ordinance department. I see them out running around doing their job. Gosh, we need like ten times more. We need ten, three or four or five or ten more ordinance officers. They're, they're, they're doing their job. And they they explain to the residents, I have a neighbor that had an issue and uh they explained to her what's going on to give her the, the opportunity to take care of it. Uh they're doing a great job in the city. They're just understaffed and underpowered, but um thank you for everything. Uh thank you for all the administration, all the people at city council. You guys are doing a great job. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, next we have uh Councilman Baydune. Are you commenting as a resident?
No, Madam Chair, thank you.
Okay, then I have uh Councilman Abdullah. Are you com- commenting as a resident?
Uh I had planned on commenting as a councilman, but I'll comment as a resident. That's fine. Either way, it's fine.
Okay, because you already commented on the, on the council part. We're only allowed to comment once there.
Then I'll, I'll comment as a resident.
Okay.
Uh right now?
Sure, go ahead. Three minutes.
Um Dave Abdallah, resident at One Cabree Lane, Dearborn Heights. Um just want to comment in regards to the uh Cultural Commission uh that was mentioned earlier. Uh by Leslie and I just want to say I serve as a liaison on that particular commission. As also Councilman Baydune is also on there. And I'm just asking the administration, honestly, I was uh kind of a little disappointed in 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 the comments today in. In the direction this is gonna take. Uh I I just like the administration to do what they can, to try to help uh push. And 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 get this event on because, you know, sometimes we go through life, we're always worried about lawsuits, 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 nothing will get done. And like Leslie mentioned, you could be afraid of lawsuits. Well, then, you know, you shouldn't walk on a sidewalk because you might fall and you shouldn't drive a car if somebody may hit you, et cetera, et cetera. With all due respect to attorneys, sometimes they're overly cautious. So as the administration, as a resident, I'd like to see them do what they can, try to help put this event on. Because I was in that meeting uh as a liaison and 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 they they have very, very good intentions. I think it'd be an excellent event for the residents. Thank you.
Thank you. That's why I have Mr. Jamal. Are you commenting as a resident?
Uh whether I'm resident or I am uh employee, I am part of the city, so my comment.
Then we need your name, street, city, and you have a three-minute limit. Go ahead, please.
Uh Hassan Jamal, Riverway, Canton, Michigan. Uh I serve the public as public servant. I don't serve. I serve the public as public servant. I don't serve people desired, whoever they are. So to further on this, thank you, Madam Chair, for allowing me to speak. I've never, absolutely, if I did by mistake, I apologized publicly before. Never tried to undermine any public official. All what I like is to have just my time and so I can express to help the people to understand how things are done and how transparently. I am an advocate of a transparent governmental process. And I respected the mayor and I respect, I respected the councils who trusted me to do that and I will never fail them. I will never step on other than what I have fact for and what I have support for. Given all this in consideration, I really don't want to point out all of you are my friends. But let me be clear, this council, the council before and probably the council coming later, you all made decision, voted in violation of the charter, the state law, and the federal law. So, and just recently you voted and approved a bid with a clear cut, as the engineer explained, referring to a condominium. I don't want to go further and bring back again the violation that being approved by the council. Year after year after year after Plant Moran in the two thousand eleven, well, thirteen fourteen. And I'm going to quote, yes, three minutes. Special tax levies, the accumulative over levy of six point eight million dollars. They are recommending the city to hit the balance in consideration when setting figures, the future levy in the future. Council member violated the charter and violated the recommendations of the state and our auditors that be reported to the state.
Thank you very much, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, next I have Dana Parrish. And I'm going to need help finding it because there you are.
Good evening, Madam Chair, Mayor, Mayor's members of council, Dana Parrish, fifty six fourteen Granville Park, Dearborn Heights. I wanted to ask a couple of questions if I could. I believe on the August tenth agenda, we voted item nine M to hold live meetings. It was a, two members, Councilman Abdahak and Muscat, wanted to extend the state of emergency. Councilman Wenzel abstained from the vote and remained her, wanted to have in person. Has that changed?
Right now, we are going under the county Zoom rule. We were able to do that instead of making one of our own.
What does that mean?
You're going to have to ask corporate counsel.
What, okay, what does that mean, corporate counsel? Did you say that, are you forcing the council to have Zoom meetings? And then in-person meetings and then Zoom meetings? How is that working?
No, the council chair has asked me if we can rely on the Public Health Department's order for Wayne County in terms of the authorization of a local state of emergency. And I've advised that, yes, we can. And I believe I've advised the mayor of the same thing. And then the council chair has used her discretion, I believe, based on the prior votes of the council to decide when or if we are going to have such meetings. If I got that wrong, council chair, please correct me.
Yeah, because what happened is we had agreed, I don't know, what was it, about a month ago, to do hybrid meetings, which means you could interact with us and we could do live meetings. Instead of just live streaming it like they've been doing, you would, you would be able to ask questions from home. And that's what our ultimate goal is, is people will be allowed to come in person or you can interact from your living room.
Right. So, so this changed from the last meeting in what way? How did the county change from the last meeting to this meeting in two weeks? I thought the state of emergency was the same if I've been checking Wayne County. How did that change from the last city council meeting to this council meeting? How did the county change?
Corporate counsel, well, see, we don't have to go under the counties. We can go live or we can go Zoom. There is an option either way. The reason we chose Zoom for this meeting, as you know, someone tested, you know, positive for COVID that was in City Hall and also at the open house for the fire department. So as a precautionary measure, at this time, we felt it was best to go Zoom. And we do watch the numbers. If the numbers go up, we're not going to have them in public.
Okay, so sorry to keep asking these questions, but it's kind of on my mind. So we've got, we had a councilman, Councilman Muscat, who was sick. I'm sorry, not sick, but he was injured and he wasn't able to attend. So we couldn't accommodate him and put those meetings for him. But we could do it now. Is anyone else injured now, council chair? Who can't perhaps go out of the house because they'd be inconvenienced?
Nope, not at all.
And was there a reason why we did the special council meeting after the August tenth meeting via Zoom instead of live?
Because the facility that we needed to do it in was not necessarily available. It was, there's only certain days we could use it. And the council chambers is tore up, so we can't go there.
I understand both council chambers. People's health is very important, isn't it?
Of course, but there's also a choice whether they choose to come in person or do it from home. And we were giving them that choice.
Absolutely, and, and people got, got sick as a result, correct?
Incorrect. Not from any council meetings that I'm aware of.
That you're aware of, but they didn't do.
Are you aware of anybody that got sick?
But they didn't do contact tracing, Madam Chair.
Pardon?
Did they do contact tracing?
I don't know, did they?
I'm, I'm asking you.
I don't have the information. How would I have it?
I'm not the council chair, you are.
Right, and I run the meeting.
Yes, you do.
And.
These are your members.
If somebody tested positive and got ahold of me, I would definitely let everybody know.
Did you let everyone know the night that the council person had COVID? Did you let other members of the public know? No, you did not.
Because they were not at the council meeting. That was their own private business.
And you didn't let them know either. That was very irresponsible, Madam Chair. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, next we have Vince Tripkowski. I'm looking for him. There you are. Go ahead, please.
Can you hear me?
Yep, you're up.
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the council and mayor. Gee, I wish I wanted to know if somebody tested positive for COVID at City Hall because I was there today. And hardly any of the staff was wearing their mask, so maybe they should follow the rules. Second thing I want to bring up is a while back at one of the previous council meetings, I suggested having the meetings at the Berwin Center. So you could use the cameras and everybody could see what was going on during Zoom meetings. Why can't Berwin be used? It's got a big stage that the entire council can fit up there. Instead of screwing around pointing fingers at people, we need a building. What building do you want to use? Berwin's a good choice. All the studio equipment and cameras are there. Problem solved. And the other thing is, Madam Chair, you got to do something about these meetings. They are way too long. You've got council members asking directors questions that should be held at a study session that would help eliminate some of the issues running this meeting.
I agree.
Okay, well, several times you sat there and argued about not having to have study sessions. And they were cost, weren't cost efficient. It doesn't matter. It's in the budget.
It's not cost efficient as much as right now. It's kind of hard. We're out of city council chambers to find a place to be. Also, too, if anybody requests a study session, I've always honored it. Ask Councilman Abdahak. I've always honored his requests. Have I not? Councilman?
Yeah, you always do.
Just ask me and I'd be more than happy to do it.
Well, you know, the length of these agendas are showing that you need extra meetings. Thank you for your time. Everybody have a good night.
Thank you. Next I have Leslie Windless. Let me get you unmuted. And you have three minutes.
Denise, is this, I had, Gary Barkoff had emailed you. And is, am I supposed to read his first and then mine? Or how does that work? Because the meeting that he was, he wanted me to speak at got canceled.
Oh, I don't know. I don't recall his email, but go ahead if you want.
Okay.
Because I've been having trouble not getting all my emails on my city. I just found today there was a couple that were sent to me that I can't find anywhere, so I don't know what's going on with our server.
Facebook too, because I told you he didn't get a response and, and then you told me I could speak at the last meeting, but then when I showed up, it was canceled.
Okay, go ahead.
Okay, so this one is for Gary Barkoff, who resides on Academy four eight one two five. He wants to know a, a update on the Van Born Corridor. He feels like it's used as an election topic every time there's an election, but nothing is being done. It's been idle for the last five years. He is also very interested in being on the committee or the team that will work to implement it. He also wanted me to make a mention that you all spent money on the Ford Road and on Ford Road in Warren. What is the holdup with Van Born on the south end? End quote.
Okay, who is that directed towards?
I think whoever can answer the question about an update on the Van Born, Van Born Corridor.
I can.
Is there someone over that project or?
Hey, man, you're.
Yes, go ahead. Yes, you are.
Okay, so we've had several meetings. We've been meeting for, for almost a year on the Van Born Overlay Program, which is actually the ordinance. We had to come up with an ordinance that both the city of Dearborn Heights and also Taylor. We've, the meetings consist of, obviously, the administration from Taylor and they have their building director in a meeting. They had some people from DPW, also from, from, well, various departments. And from, from ours, we had our building department, our ordinance, and also Mr. Deep, our city engineer, they've been involved in the meeting. So right now, they came up with the ordinance. The ordinance obviously would have to go in front of city council, both in Dearborn Heights and Taylor. So they had their first initial ordinance iteration that, for both cities. And, you know, once they finalize it, make, it's a draft form right now. Once they finalize it between our building department, you know, ordinance, you know, slash Taylor's building department ordinance. Once that's approved, then it goes in front of both council for approval. Then we'll just start from there. So it, it, it is, it is going forward. And there's a lot more done on the Van Born Corridor this year than ever.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you.
So for my public comment, Leslie Windless, Annapolis Street, Dearborn Heights, Michigan, four eight one two five. I only just want to know about Allen Brothers. I went to a protest today in Detroit from Hamtramck City Council. And I just want to know what, and I'm, I'm not intending for this to be like a pointing of the fingers. I just want to know going forward, like, what are we doing? Like, what role does that company play for the city as far as attorney, anything related to their services for the city? I am very disgusted by what was printed in the paper of the things that were said to someone who has a disability. I won't read what they were because they're, they're pretty disgusting. And I, I get sick even thinking about it, but the part that I do want to highlight is the dare for him to be, for the person to go public and for him to be canceled. I guess you can call me someone who's in favor of the cancel culture because I don't understand why we would use someone for services who's done this. And I don't know if this is a city council decision or if it's an administration decision, but I'd like to know what our relationship is with this company and what we plan on doing going forward. And that's my only question.
Actually, I think Mr. Miyaki wants to answer this one here. So it's a legal matter.
Basically, these issues were raised with me and I had a rather lengthy discussion with Mr. Jim Allen based on that. And what he stated to me is that the basis for his comments was actually to try to flush out someone who has been anonymously harassing him. He indicated that he has received calls from burner phones with respect to his deceased father, making disparaging comments about his deceased father. He had indicated that he had received such a call with respect to an anonymous individual commenting on his daughter's anatomy and talking about what this person wanted to do with his daughter. He commented that this person or people had made a comment about his son, referring to his son as a quote unquote retard. He had indicated that this person had harassed him by making comments about the sexual orientation of his brother, who used to be his partner at the law firm. And based on that, what Mr. Allen indicated was he made the comments not to Mr. Blackwell, but rather to an anonymous individual who was using a female Middle Eastern name and therefore thought that this person might have been the person who had been harassing him and therefore made the comments because he believed that the person who was harassing him was Mr. Blackwell and he was trying to flush Mr. Blackwell out. And therefore ended up directing these comments, which I certainly do not condone. But he made these comments in order to flush out a reaction from Mr. Blackwell. And that is what he did. So it's not necessarily what one would consider to be your typical type of inappropriate language situation where he. where he believed he was taking action to flush out someone who had engaged in various forms of harassment of him, including potential threats against his daughter. As and as well as any number of very inappropriate comments about sexual orientation, disability status, and frankly, just what would be considered to be sexual harassment if it had been directed at his daughter. I would note that the matter is under further review. We are looking to see if we receive additional information that bears on these topics and clarifies whether or not the information that we've received is correct with respect to Mr. Allen and his position with regard to that. And I'd also note that the individual from his firm who does almost all of the work, not exclusively, but almost all of the work for the city has not been involved in any of these comments. That would be Harry Kellagarakas from Allen Brothers. And we rely on Mr. Kellagarakas. So we are at a point where we are, if we are hoping to end up being reimbursed on any of these federal grants, need to end up continuing to use Allen Brothers. Obviously, if the further review suggests that there are greater problems and that if that's the will of the mayor and the council, then certainly this can end up being revisited. But right now, the matter is under review. It's being looked at very seriously. Mr. Allen and I had probably about a forty minute conversation so that he could explain why it was that he did what he did. And even though I do not condone the comments, even if it was with the intent of flushing someone out who had been engaged purportedly in harassment of him, we wanna look at this and handle things fairly and also make sure that the city is not jeopardized by being in the middle of having to apply for federal grants without qualified counsel to end up following up on these matters and making sure the city is reimbursed for this work. I hope that addresses questions. If anyone else has further questions, I'd be glad to answer them.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Madam Chair, so you're done?
Yes, I guess I will wait for, he said it was still under investigation, so I will wait for his investigation to conclude. I did appreciate the the backstory and hearing that the city is looking into it further.
Thank you. Okay. Councilman Abdullah, did you need?
Yeah, I I I just, with all due respect, you know, I I condemn the comments that the attorney made. I I seen them on the news. I didn't, you know, read everything, which is what I seen in the paper and on the news. I totally condemn those types of comments. And with due respect to the attorney, I don't accept e- even though it may be true, maybe from his particular end, but you know, two wrongs don't make a right. So if somebody is harassing me, you know, and I'm a public official and I'm not gonna like it, obviously. But for me to sit and 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 make all kinds of derogatory comments towards whoever is harassing me, even if they are anonymous, it's just, it's just, it's just wrong. Two wrongs don't make a right. So to me, it's still wrong. And and I, for one, will go publicly and say I condemn those types of comments. Don't respect anybody that makes those types of comments and that's it. Thank you.
I I agree with Councilman Abdullah. He didn't, he was anonymous. He didn't know who he was saying it to, but he still said him out loud to somebody. And that just, I I it bothers me cuz the person's disabled. I have disabled family members. I I it just bothers me. All right, next I have Nancy Brier. Go ahead, please.
All right, I'm not used to the airphones. I missed earlier, so since we're running long again, I'm not gonna take too much time. I'll make our.
Is it public comment? I'm sorry, is it community announcement or public comment?
I'm back to the comment now. We don't have time for the others. So I have three little statements. I like, oh, first of all, Colgate Street, Dearborn Heights. And as a commission member of the E. Course Creek Commission, I wanted to thank the mayor and Mr. Ali Deeb. We even had Rashida there. There were over fifty people. And it was a very well presented town hall. More people should have attended and would have been updated on everything. Also, our fire department, when we had the open house, I had a tour of the building with Chief Dave Brogan and I thank him for that. And we need to do something about that building. It's gonna cost more to fix it than to tear it down. Every corner, every wall is pulling away from its foundation. It's not just the floor. There's also water issues and it needs attention soon. The third thing I'd like to suggest is in going door to door and meeting people in the neighborhood, I met a lady who's been waiting over three years and not getting any satisfaction from our city to take down a dead tree in the easement. I believe she's at twenty six thousand one hundred courier and it'd be nice if we could follow through on that. And since we're running late, I'll end right there. Thank you.
Thank you. Next I have Tim Emery. You're up, sir. Three minutes.
Hi, good evening. I'll keep it quick. I've talked with League Evan. I've talked with Tom Roscoe. The, ever since we had the power outage down this way last summer, the street lights on the west side of Beach Daily have been out. It's been turned over. I know there, it's it's been going on. I don't know who else to talk to. They say they're working on it, but they've been out since, like I say, what, August, July, August? So.
What section of Beach Daily that's west?
From Annapolis to Van Born.
Okay, thank you.
And that's all I have.
Thank you. Next, no, we still got Rachel LaPointe. We can't not let her speak. Oh, did we lose her? There she is. Rachel LaPointe.
Hello, good evening, everyone, Council Chair, Mayor. Just real quick, I wanna thank the firefighters for the open house. It was really a great time. And they did a really great job. The kids loved it. They really wanna see a bigger thing to shoot with the fire hose next year. So we were given the guys ideas. But I also, on a more serious note, I really encourage someone to, if there was someone COVID positive at an event or a meeting or anything that the city hosted and the city did not get people's information to do contact tracing, then we should really be publishing like on Facebook and stuff to say like, just as an FYI, if you were at the open house or if you were at this meeting from this time to this time, there was a COVID positive person there and you might wanna keep an eye on yourself. Just as a as a courtesy, even if it's not required legally, as an ethical thing, I think it's important to say, hey, guys, just FYI, someone was positive. You don't have to reveal any personal information for that. So I know I would appreciate that. I know my husband would. Our family would certainly really wanna know that kind of information as soon as the city knew it. So yeah, that's all. Thank you. Have a great night, everybody. Good job, everybody, especially Elizabeth. I'm so sad to hear that she's leaving. So, good night.
Good night.
Else? Do we hear a motion to adjourn?
Motion adjourned.
Okay, do I hear support?
Support.
Support by Councilman Abdul Hawk, Councilman Muscat, always, yeah, of course, always. Motion to adjourn. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Yeah, it's have it. Meeting's adjourned. Everyone have a good night.
You too. Have a good night, everyone.